Lock back in anyway, if you can't call my cellphone. It's, I'll just, I'll put it on here for anybody, anybody can share with anybody. I can also, um, can call the phone number and then you can also dial my cellphone and I can put you on speaker. Okay, Kevin, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, thank you Laura. Alright, I'd like to call the June 1st, 2020 special meeting of the Town Designation Plan Board and zoning commission to order. Ms. Robertson, would you please call the role?
Mo Oster?
Here.
David Diarpino?
Here.
Angus Khan?
Here.
Um, Crystal Flim?
Present.
Patrick McPartlin?
Here.
Michael Scrubuchan?
Here.
Daisy Shenfield? Might have to unmute yourself Daisy.
Here.
And Leslie Gold?
Here.
And Chairman Walsh?
Here. And thank you everybody for joining up tonight. And just a friendly reminder, it's best if you can stay on mute unless you're speaking, help with the background noise and help improve the recording, so thank you. So for type, um, basically we have just a special meeting, a working session regarding the Windsor Drive connection to River Road. And of course, anything associated with the average density development at 2538 River Road, uh, the applicant is on the line. Before we get into public discussion, what we thought we would do is, uh, Ms. Rob- Ms. Robertson has kind of been kind enough to give us an update, because we have received, um, you know, some different information, uh, since the last meeting. And, uh, so I'm gonna let, um, Laura bring us up to date on the different information that's been received. And if Mr. Vice Salon, who's also online, wants to add anything to that, I'll give him the opportunity also. Okay Laura, so why don't you go ahead?
So, um, hopefully you all had a chance to see the new packet. I think I'll try and quickly share my screen while I'm talking here. Joel went to the county. And they said that he could only have one cut onto River Road. So, um, this is the new plan here. And instead of having the two curb cuts in a U shape onto River Road, it has one curb cut where the, um, line of sight is better here. And, um, and then this is now a cul-de-sac so that it doesn't have that entrance here. The bike path was moved to the one entrance. Um, so that it's aligning with the cars, where the cars are going in and out. And, um, that was also at the county's request. Um, so you have a curve here, then a sharp bend, then another sharp bend. And I believe this is a, a key intersection with stop signs in both, there are proposed stop signs in both directions. And, uh, the number of units is still the same. And like the houses over here is all the same. Um, so the main difference here is that it's cul-de-sac instead of connecting, and that's from the county referral. Um, and then they did do an updated traffic report, which was attached to the packet. Essentially, the traffic report, the conclusions are the same regardless of whether or not it's a horseshoe or, um, or a, a roundabout. So it didn't significantly change the traffic report, but it was updated to include just a single entrance onto River Road.
Okay, um, thank, thank you Laura. Um, the applicant, um, is online. Joel, did you have anything you want to add at all this time?
Uh, can you hear me Kevin?
Yes, we can.
Uh, yeah, I think I just wanted to add that, uh, if the connection didn't go through, and it was only the bike path, and then we had the one cut on River Road that the cul-de-sac is aligned such that we could put a, um, crash pad, emergency crash pad from the cul-de-sac to River Road, you know, to address safety concerns, kind of like, uh, they had on Lori Drive. And the other thing too is I know in this meeting, there was a lot of discussion about, uh, wetlands impacts. And essentially with this, with this arrangement, we don't touch any wetlands. I mean, there is no wetland impact whatsoever. So that's kind of important. And, you know, we do have, you know, the large, the large tree buffer zone. And that's kind of about it right now.
Okay, thank you Joel, appreciate that. And, um, the other things we want to talk about, and Laura, I don't know if you're prepared right now. So, um, you know, one of the concerns or questions that comes up, you know, is why, why do we want to make the connection? Um, in a couple of moments, uh, the, Mr. Diarpino, who was co-chair of, uh, comprehensive plan, was it 2013?
Yeah, 2013, yep.
Yeah, 20, yeah, 2013, looking at it right here. So he was the co-chair and he's gonna, uh, talk about, uh, things that were identified in the plan before we open up to the public. But Laura, did you want to talk about anything that you, uh, best practices from your, uh, your planning certification, uh, training or anything along those lines?
Oh, sure. Okay. So, I mean, the point of tonight is that, you know, we wanted to have a dialogue back and forth with the public because the planning board, I think, feels a little restricted when we're at a public hearing. You guys have your time to speak and then we're not really allowed to respond, then the whole meeting closes, then we have our time to speak. So we wanted to go back and forth. But I think that the idea for tonight is that, um, you know, we'll just go over a couple of things so you can kind of understand where the planning board's coming from, and then we can listen to you, and then we can go back and forth and see if we can find consensus. Because we're all, we all are planners and we love consensus. So I just wanted to, so I just, because I feel like sometimes people feel like we're not listening to them and we're just randomly asking for something because we can. I mean, um, you just wanted to put in context, like, planning practice and connectivity. So you guys, um, probably know, Oldest Unit was built before World War II, and it has a lot of connectivity. All the streets are sort of in a gridiron pattern, and that's very typical for the way that streets were built prior to World War II. And then when we're, after World War II, um, when they subsidized the housing for the vets that were returning from World War II, they started doing cul-de-sacs. And it became standard practice to have kind of unconnected neighborhoods with arterials all around them. But that also had unintended negative consequences, such as the segmented neighborhoods, the lack of safe alternative routes for bicycles and pedestrians, and heavy traffic on the arterial, arterial roads. So it's gone back and forth. Right before World War II, it was all connected. Then after World War II, up until about the 90s, um, it was a lot of cul-de-sac development that caused a lot of traffic problems on arterials and didn't have a lot of ways for bicycles and pedestrians to get around. And then in the 90s and early 2000s, um, cities started adopting connectivity standards. They require more road connections, and they also started paving road stubs for future connections. And that was, um, to directly connect neighborhoods, to provide for continuous routes for all modes of transportation. Um, they were trying to kind of make a grid for traffic, and it would decrease vehicle miles traveled and trip lengths and those kind of things. Um, also good, good for emergency access and services, things like garbage trucks, mail, school buses, all those things benefit from connectivity. But in all the literature, I mean, it certainly does, it has to be done carefully, because the consequence of that connectivity is additional traffic on residential roads. So a lot of towns that, um, adopt connectivity standards also put in place, um, like, ways to mitigate the additional problems with traffic going through residential neighborhoods. So a lot of them have, have, okay, you're gonna do the connection, you're required to do the connection, you're also required to do traffic calming. And a lot of that, when I was just researching and double checking for this meeting, and we haven't talked about this before, is street width. So, I mean, we have talked about street width a little bit, but actually narrowing the pavement, um, in certain ways, or road diet, if you guys have heard of road diet, that is, um, something that has really started to work for slowing down traffic. You want the connectivity, but you don't want the cut through. And that's just the, the planning standards that we're looking at is, you know, connectivity for all those reasons, understanding that there's an impact to the residential neighborhood, so trying to find a balance between those two is really what we're looking at. And then, um, I think you guys already know, because you talked about this, um, you know, Windsor, Windsor subdivision, when the third one went in, the, the stub was paved with the intention of it going to River Road. In 2000, I think, seven, the town was trying itself to put the road in, and there were always wetland issues. So, um, this developer has figured out a way to do the connection that avoids the wetland issues. It hadn't been figured out up until this point. But typically, when you put connectivity, and this is just from a planning standpoint, it doesn't mean that we can't have a great conversation tonight, because I really think we can. Um, but typically, when you put that connectivity in a plan, the town wouldn't remove it without extenuating circumstances. So that's just where we're at. So we want to talk about, you know, why we're coming from our perspective, and then where you guys are coming from, and then hopefully find consensus.
Okay, thanks Laura. One other, uh, item we talked about, now if you had an opportunity, um, I didn't get a chance to drive over there today and, uh, take a look at all the names of the streets, but there are, uh, at least two, possibly three other stub roads in the Windsor area when that was, uh, laid out, is that correct?
Yeah, um, so Thomas Road off of Lamp lighter, it connects to 11 acres. An initial sketch plan for that, um, subdivision was a, had a connection to River Road, it was discussed. Hasn't been developed yet. There's an unpaved stub off of Edison that goes to that same 11 acres. Um, and then Menlo Park stub, Menlo Park Drive is actually a four-way intersection. And the Menlo Park stub goes off to another 11 acres. Um, that's kind of back behind the houses and the first block of Windsor Drive. So there are a couple of other stubs in the neighborhood. Two of them are paved, one of them is not.
Okay, thank you very much Laura. That's just some background information, just, uh, we want to make sure we got that out first. Um, uh, David, um, are you prepared just to summarize from, uh, you know, your past work, uh, on the, uh, comprehensive plan? Some of the items that were in plan 2013?
Sure, uh, past week, uh, Mr. McPartlin and I reviewed the comprehensive plan, and we came up with what we feel are three key, uh, items, uh, in support of the Windsor Drive connection to at least explore it at this level. Uh, the first one is to promote interconnectivity and street circulation design throughout the town, which should benefit the entire residential population, businesses, and neighboring communities. Uh, the second item is the connection between Van Antwerp and River Road via Windsor Drive is specifically identified as an opportunity to improve traffic circulation and arterial management, and the importance of this connection is amplified by its proximity to the town center overlay district in Blatnik Park. And the third item is the improvement and maintaining of the livability factors that allow the neighborhoods to be interconnected to the town center and recreational facilities. So those were the three main points that we came up with. The supporting documentation in the plan are on the following pages. Uh, page five, the third bullet point. Pages 13 and 14, which are the neighborhood descriptions. Page 21, which refers to transportation and connectivity. Page 30, objective number one. Page 31, task number 10. Page 32, task number three. Page 39, refers to the bike path connectivity and limitations on development. Page 86 is land use. And page 112 is the town center connectivity.
Thank, thank, thank you David, appreciate that. Uh, one thing, uh, like that I was, uh, involved in the previous, the comp plan before comp plan 2013, I believe it was 2003, and I have to pull up to take a look at the actual date, I'm not sure, maybe, might not have been passed till 2006. Um, and I noticed that, you know, one of the things that comes up is the, um, I believe it's page 32 regarding Edison Woods, complete the extension of what you drive to River Road with a multi-use path. Um, and that, that words changed from the older plan, uh, of 2003 or 2006 plan to 2013 plan. My assumption, and it may not be correct, is that there was some concerns, um, uh, with the, the comp plan, David, with your comp plan committee, that because of the wetlands, that it would be difficult to develop this parcel as a R1, which is zoned as 18,000 square foot lots. I don't think, uh, had the intuition that we would get someone to purchase the land and, uh, come in with an, uh, average density development application. Uh, the average density development application, which allows the developer to basically have the size of the lots while maintaining the same number of units. So if it was an R1, we decided that we could fit, uh, uh, let's see, 24, um, residences in there. And so this application is for 24, but they're on half the size of the lots, approximately 9,000 square foot versus the 18, uh, thousand square foot required in R1 residential zoning district. And the benefit being, uh, uh, more green space, uh, less pavement, uh, less impact to wetlands. Um, and so that the, uh, the, uh, pros and cons are, hey, it's different than what's allowed there. But if approved by the town board, because this is a special permitted use which requires town board approval, there are benefits, uh, potential benefits to the, to the, uh, community. Uh, so I think, um, uh, by the application by, by Joel, Mr. Bazoin, um, to do the average density development, it has, um, you know, given the opportunity to make that connection when there may have been some thoughts that it may not have been possible. So that's kind of where we're at today. And obviously, as, um, speaking for myself, uh, been doing this a while, we always got to start out with, you know, what the guidance was from past comprehensive plans and from good planning practices, and see where it leads. And that's, and that's why this is a work in progress. I know that a lot of folks thought that this is a done deal. By no means is this a done deal. That's why we're having this wonderful meeting tonight with, uh, it looks like we got about 40, 42, 44 people online at any given moment. So, um, I just wanted to throw that out there so you can understand, um, again, why, uh, uh, I mean, the words may be different in comp plan 2013. Uh, before we go to the public, um, is there anybody from the planning board that has anything they would like to add?
Hey Kevin, this is Joel. I just want to say that, um, uh, Mark Nadalney from, uh, Creighton Manning, the traffic study officer, should be on the line if there's any detailed question.
Then I, I also wanted to mention, we have our TDE here as well, um, just to prepare for the, of the traffic. So the town hired, um, DPI, and they're all on the line if people have questions for that. And, um, the intent is, um, you know, people from the public can speak, and then, you know, hopefully we can answer some of their questions in real time, going back and forth, so.
And who, and who is the person for the town designated engineer that's online tonight, Laura?
Uh, Fred Bastiany.
Bastiany, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Alright, again, any, anybody from the planning board have any comments for the public before we, uh, allow Laura to open the floor?
Yes, I'd like to say something, it's Leslie. Um, the impetus for connectivity did not start with the town. It's been encouraged at planning conferences for decades. One of the benefits is actually building and enhancing the sense of community. We've mentioned before, the ability for emergency responders to get through. It's also that if there is an emergency, there's a reasonable way to divert traffic. And, you know, if the town didn't come up with this on its own, it's following best practices.
Okay, okay, thank you Leslie, it was Gold. Uh, anybody else from the planning board first?
Oh yeah, this is Chris Laflamme. Laura and Joel, were there any updates from the county with regards to the, the speed limit on River Road? It, it, any of the recent conversations have been going back and forth, any updates on that?
Laura, do you want to take that? Because, um, I teed it up with the county, but, uh, I didn't officially tee it up, so I think by going to one road cut, uh, you know, we have the sight distance and it's no issue with the current speed limit, but I just personally thought that with the splash pad and all the great things that are happening in Blatnik Park, that somebody should tee it up officially.
Yeah, the town is definitely in support. I think Joel, when you talked and we were talking about moving the change in speed limit, because right now it's, it's slightly pasture development, but only just, right? And so we were talking about moving it into some, somewhere just before Riverdale or something like that, right? So that there's a longer grace period for people to be required to slow down when you're passing, um. I might be getting it wrong. We don't have anything official from the county on it yet, but I, I mean, I think the town is definitely supportive of, um, making a bigger cushion in the speed limit change to our parks and to this road entrance if it should go through.
Thank you Laura.
I mean, a lot, a lot of the people, the discussions that we had, Chris, with the county are that they sped down to the intersection of River Road and, and Rosendale, and now you have a, and they sat there, and now there's a traffic circle being built. So, you know, what's the harm in reducing the speed from 45 down to 40?
Yep, fair enough. And it's all good, all good discussion. I just wasn't sure if we had any, any updates, uh, official updates. But, um, good, good to hear where we're at.
Okay, thanks Chris. Okay, last call for any other planning board members before we open the floor? Okay. Hearing no one? Hopefully not because they're on mute. Um, let's, uh, Laura, you have a process, uh, tonight, uh, how you want to handle the, um, personnel that we have calling in here?
Um, so I didn't require anybody to register, and I wanted the link to be very open, um, and very accessible. Um, I know, um, Art, if you just want to start, I think that would work. And then, like, I just say, let's be respectful to everyone that's on the line and make sure that everybody who wants to speak speaks. And, um, you know, if we go back and forth, that's fine, but let's make sure that, you know, that we, so every time someone's done, you know, someone else can jump in, we can keep a list, just to make sure that everybody who wants to speak can speak, and we can answer hopefully a lot of questions. Do you want to go ahead, Art? You are muted? Yeah, um, so just, if you, um, just hold your, um, mouse kind of over your screen, and the little ribbon will pop up, and you just want to get that microphone button that's, uh, red circle, uh, unmuted. Alright, I might be able to work with you separately. I know the other person that tested the connection, and I don't mean to be random here. But Daniella, do you want to start? And then, uh, people can tag on, and I'll work with Art.
Um, I can, I think Art was really gonna kick it off though, so I, I want him to be able to try to do that if he could.
Control, the control D.
Oh, can I unmute him with that? Let me try it.
No, I don't know if you can, but maybe if Art can hear us, hit the control button and D at the same time, it should unmute you, I think.
So I, I want to try, because typically the organizer has the ability to mute and unmute at will.
Control D? So, that only works for myself. Art, I think, um, you turned your video off, which is the right section of buttons. Uh, um, if you want to click the video button again, and then just go to, over to your mute button, I think you're in the right neighborhood.
Would it be a benefit if he just signed off and then signed back on, and it would take a minute?
Okay, so he's trying that. Let's see, he may come in muted because of the, there are people on the call. Sorry. Art is back. So Art, we can all see you. You're welcome to call my cellphone, and I can put you on speaker so that we can hear you, if you want to do that. Um, yeah, just pull your phone out. It's 518- 368- 9616. And so we can see you, we'll just put you on my, we'll just put you on my speakerphone. And I'm sorry about that. I think that's just, that's just the nature of having 50 people on a call. So it's-
Laura, I was gonna speak after Art, if you just want me to go.
Yeah. I think he's closed. Oh, why don't you go ahead? If anybody has Art's number, then they could tech me. Oh, I could, um, yeah, he can ask, Art, you can also call that number. I'll email him. Go ahead, I'll work with him.
Laura, I have this cell, I'll send it over to you.
Okay, perfect.
Um, my name's Connie Trigger, and, um, to prepare for the meeting, I listened to your May 11th meeting again. And, um, you talked about wanting, uh, resident, wanting residents to understand the process that you go through. And, uh, I got the impression from some of the comments that were made that you are kind of frustrated with us, and we're frustrated too. And we just wanted to give you our perspective on the process. And one thing that's been different, is learning that various committees have been discussing changes that will significantly impact our neighborhood before we even heard about it. And apparently without those committees actually speaking to anyone who lives here, and perhaps having been giving misleading information about the lack of support for the proposed change. And it's also difficult to hear comments about material having to be dumbed down for us to understand it, so that meetings don't get contentious. Or to hear someone question whether we had actually looked at a town document before we purchased our houses, as if that would change the content of that document, and it was in public on video. And it's frustrating to listen to an expert traffic engineer present a report on a study that includes data supporting our concerns about significant increase of vehicle traffic down Windsor. And then here, it'd be followed by board members who were questioning the data based on their personal travel preferences, opinions, and impressions. And then to read a follow-up report on the study from the same firm using the same data that appears to have been reworded to support those opinions, while at the time, same time, removing wording on important factors such as the increased traffic potentially changing the character of the neighborhood. And it's frustrating, just by, I guess, by the way the meetings are organized, to have hours of comments read to the board during the privilege of the floor, and have little acknowledgement during the board's discussion period that those concerns were heard. And besides the traffic study, the information source that has caused the most confusion and irritation is the comprehensive plan. And how it has been used to justify changes the board required of the developer. And we recognize that six current members of the planning board were involved in the plan's creation in one capacity or another. And having residents question it might be uncomfortable, but you don't have to look very hard to see sections that would explain our understanding that no connection would be made, and to support our opposition to cut through on the grounds of, to the cut through on the grounds of safety, the environment, and maintaining our neighborhood's character. Um, board members have commented a number of times in public meetings, there's a stub road, they should have known. And one board member said in kind of disparaging tone, how many of those residents do you think actually read that before they bought their homes? So we've all read it now, and learned, for instance, that in the introduction, it says that the comprehensive plan provides a roadmap that sets out broad goals and objectives for the immediate and future preservation of valued community characteristics, while allowing for the enhancement of smart and sustainable growth. And the potential addition of 900 cars a day would result in the change of our neighborhood's value characteristics. And on page five, it says, "The new development should not compromise the integrity of the surrounding neighborhoods." And the creation of the development itself and the lack of green space alone would compromise the integrity of the surrounding neighborhood, as well as the setting of River Road itself, even without a cut through. And adding the additional vehicles that the traffic study projected would have a significant And adding the additional vehicles that the traffic study projected would have a significant negative impact. Um, and on page 12 of the plan, introduction to the neighborhood's narrative section includes the observation that the initial planning of the 2013 comprehensive plan, the committee members discussed the many diverse areas that create the town's unique character. And that based on these development patterns, it became apparent that although there are townwide issues, some topics affect each area differently. So we interpret this to mean that neighborhood diversity is valued and should be maintained. In this case, making a change to solve a problem that doesn't exist would not demonstrate a recognition of that value, value. And you've talked about connectivity, but the areas dealing with transportation have many contradictory messages. And I started trying to list them and after an hour, I couldn't find a way to do it in a logical way. For instance, in the transportation issue section, the introduction includes the warning that no instance should transportation planning be concerned with transportation services alone. The road and pedestrian network is a key factor in the safety, social workings and visual impact of a community. As road traffic and speeds increase, the road becomes a barrier, safety becomes a problem and the sense of neighborhood is lost. And then later it says, we should also respect natural topography, residential features and present an attractive streetscape that is designed based on function. And under transportation goals, we read, design street layouts and new subdivisions that preclude cul-de-sacs. Continue town action to provide interconnections between isolated subdivisions, but aren't we supposed to comp, we're not supposed to compromise the integrity of the surrounding neighborhoods? And aren't homes on cul-de-sacs desirable because they have less road traffic and promote a sense of neighborhood? And would it be considered more attractive to potential empty nester buyer of a Kelts Farm home? Which one would be more attractive, a neighborhood with limited through traffic? Or a short street that potentially draws 900 cars a day past their townhouse? And under the uh, circu, street circulation system design, there's a section that reads, the town has maintained a longstanding policy of advocating connecting streets on the official map. Connecting streets have the ability of reducing daily trips on a single feeder road that typically services a department, a development. And that goes along with a, there's a stub road for 15, been a stub road for 15 years, I should know, as if it's written in stone. However, that paragraph is preceded by one that says additions and deletions should be made to the official map that anticipates the circulation, safety and environmental needs of the community. And in another example of recognizing a change that needed to be made, the neighborhood parks section talks about Schenectady County needing 24 acres of parkland to Niskiun. And that being located in wetlands that was rezoned to land conservation, the paper streets lying within it were removed by the town board. So since 2013, more state green space has been eliminated, developments have been added and venues outside the town have come about, all potentially impacting the Windsor Drive area. And it doesn't seem out of the question for the Windsor Drive stub to be a justified deletion from that official map. As was mentioned at your May meeting, the improved accessibility to public places section states, extending the Windsor Drive multipurpose path to River Road should be a town priority as it would significantly improve town connectivity to the bike path and black, that black make car. And then it goes on to give a definition of multi-use paths as important non-motorized vehicular links connecting residents. I'm, I know I'm going on, but you know, this is in here and it, as stated in that meeting, there's the whole portion where it says it's unlikely to be built the Windsor Road extension. Uh, so I finally gave up trying to summarize all the contradictions. Protect the wetlands, go through the wetlands, maintain the character of the neighborhood unless it's like a cul-de-sac, then connect it. Think about the traffic flow, don't only think about the traffic flow. And it comes across as a document that can be used to cherry pick whatever is needed to support a recommendation. And as people trying to advocate for their neighborhood, this is very frustrating. Every recommendation you make sets a precedent. You've talked about Whammer Road, a totally different traffic, traffic situation. Or wanting to find other streets to tell us stories about to show us precedence to justify your plan. The developer told you at your March meeting that the owner of the parcels, the date of adjacent units, wants to do the same thing. So what precedent will you be setting? Will you require that that development is connected to Windsor? There's a over five acre parcel in River Road to the south, if that's developed, will you require the adjacent cul-de-sac be connected to something? So we hope that, please think about what precedent you are setting and rely on the data and listen to the current residents of the neighborhood when you decide whether it is truly necessary to require that the developer add the cut through.
Laura, can you hear me now?
Yes, yep, sorry for all that trouble, um.
Okay, can I, can I just chime in here?
Yeah, go ahead, yep.
I was supposed to make the introductory comments, so I'll, I'll make them a little late, but the first comment was, my name is Art Pasquarello, I live at 4016 Windsor Drive. And first of all, the residents want to thank the members of the planning board for meeting with us tonight. And by way of explaining how we intend to present to you, we interestingly had a combination total of 97 requests by email and cellphone to speak this evening. That included two high school students and a sixth grade student. Uh, in um, uh, we didn't discourage anyone from speaking tonight, but what we did do is explain that we were going to have five residents of Windsor Drive speak primarily and address a specific issue. So each of the five speakers will address a specific issue. Uh, you've heard Connie Trigger talk about the comprehensive plan. And next is Rajib Data who will speak about the traffic study.
Thanks, Art, I think it's great.
Okay, so uh, this is Rajib Data, uh, can you guys hear me? Laura, can you hear me? Okay.
Yep, you're good.
So we live in 4101 Windsor, just next to the Kelts Farm. And um, I, I studied the traffic report. And uh, you know, it's not just myself, I would say many of us actually dug into the traffic report. And so what I thought was that I took really inputs and, and scanning through the real takeaways from the report. Uh, I, I kind of built a few slides to kind of go through it. I think it will be more clear if I, if I do that. So let's present, uh, you know, a couple of, uh, three, four slides. It should not take that long, but I, I want to make sure that it's clear what I'm saying. Let me know when you can see it.
So Rajib, there'll be two, there'll be two steps when we're presenting your screen. You hit present now and then you have to select which screen you're presenting and then hit share. It's, it's like a two-step process, do you see that second window? So, so you hit present now, oh, there we go, yep. Okay, we can see it.
Okay, okay. So um, you know, Windsor Drive, as, as residents of, of this neighborhood, um, this strongly think, believe that the cut through is going to change. And Windsor Drive is going to change if we do the cut through, if this cut through project goes through and it's not going to change for the better. Yeah. Um, for the residents, significantly increased traffic and the resulting safety concerns due to the cut through between the Windsor and River Road are the primary reasons for opposing this extension. And hence the, for a traffic study showing the impact, both quantitatively and qualitatively should be important. If not the most important factor to consider. And, and so you guys, or all of us, we, we know this traffic study is really, really very, very important aspect of it. The, the first study report, uh, from Cretton Manning read that an increase of 950 vehicles a day on Windsor Drive occurred due to the connection. And this would primarily be due to looking at the traffic from River Road um, between Windsor and G Circle. And that reduces the travel time by a mere 1 minute 10 seconds. Okay, and due to this diversion, Windsor Drive will change from an urban local road to closer to an urban collector. And this is, I'm just quoting from the report. Finally, the study concluded that the town should decide if the travel time benefits outweigh any perceived impact to the quality of life. That's the last conclusion in the report. Now, even though the report indicates significant increase in traffic, its scope was limited only to the Van and Fort Windsor intersection. Yeah. And, and what I mean here is that basically what it looked at is the traffic that's coming from River Road via G, by G Circle up to this intersection, how much of that would be diverted through Windsor Drive? Yeah. A, a significant percentage of the traffic volume actually goes past G Circle towards Connected E locations. And if you can see, this is basically, you know, downtown Schenectady is. And, and uh, this cut through actually provides a much more direct path. Yeah. So it did not take into account really the traffic to and from Schenectady via the G Circle. And a significant percentage of this traffic volume will cut through Windsor once the connection is built. And this was pointed out several times, but still it was omitted in the updated study. Yeah. Now, I would like to point out that there was no second study done, as Connie mentioned. The same report, the same report that was dated on May 8th was updated on May 20th. And this was prompted by the town planning board in order to provide reduced traffic volumes based on opinions of the board members. And those who have not yet done so, please watch the proceedings of the May 11 town planning board meeting on YouTube and then read the report. You will clearly see what I mean. And may I say that an engineering study is not based on opinions, but rules, data and algorithms. A fundamental rule in engineering is that if you have two parallel paths, the flow is greater in the shorter and easier path and it's not qualitative, it can be quantified. So when CME put a 90% diversion, I believe it was not based on their opinion, it was based on rules. And the town planning board had the report reviewed by Greenman Peterson Incorporated and they confirmed the number 932 vehicles in their later dated May 26. The same conclusions as the CME report. And the time savings in the updated version bent down to 1 minute 5 seconds. And with the traffic coming measures that we are talking about, this time will go down to perhaps next to nil. Next to zero. So what exactly is the benefit? What are we trying to solve? You will achieve little or nothing, but severely and permanently harm the community. Now, uh, similarly, whether a road is an urban collector or a local road is based on its function and the type of traffic, not because of anyone's opinion. You know, please refer to table six in the updated report. Even though the first report categorically stated that Windsor Drive is an urban local road, the updated report changed the statement to, and here is something that is, you should listen very, very carefully, the same statement was changed to, even though Windsor is a local road, it shares some characteristics with collector facilities. And why was it done? In order to change the conclusion that Windsor Drive will not change its character. So between the initial and the updated reports, there was no new data. And as far as I know, neither the Department of Transportation's definition of road categories have changed, nor has Windsor Drive changed. So in a town that's noted for its professionals and highly educated population, it's totally unacceptable to modify fundamental engineering conclusions because the town planning board finds it difficult to justify their arguments. Now, in response to a question about the traffic passing through G Circle towards Bolton Road and Schenectady, we received an email, not a study. And I find the explanations too simplistic and not justifiable for the following reasons. You know, a starting point in Route 7 was deliberately selected to provide a straight access by Union Street. The timings are not during, you know, big business hours under non-COVID scenario and therefore it's not fit in addressing our concerns. During rush hours going through Union Street with a lot of traffic lights certainly takes a lot of time. And with the roundabout coming on River and Rosendale Road junction, you know, that's going to ease out a lot of traffic, that path will be even more attractive. They also didn't comment on the River Road, uh, traffic taking a left on Bolton Road at the signal towards the Niskiun Center, so it's, it's a gap. So how can CME claim that none of the vehicles coming north on River Road going past G Circle don't go towards Schenectady? It is definitely the case today. There are a lot of cars and vehicles that go past G Circle go to Schenectady. Now, small or big, right, this needs to be quantified, it cannot be a qualitative thing, you cannot brush it off. It has to be accounted for in the study. Now, the GPI review also recommended evaluating traffic at the River Road Windsor intersection if you create one, which is also missing from the current study. Another important factor, you know, in the upcoming configuration of the elementary and middle schools, if you don't know, you can go and read through it, it will create significant cross-town traffic because they're mixing up classes between the middle schools. And, and that traffic, a part of that traffic is going to go through Windsor during rush hours on top of the existing high school traffic. You know, as a parent, my daughter actually is in high school, it takes me 20 minutes. Sometimes, you know, on an average 15 minutes, 20 minutes to drop her off to school in the morning. Okay, so, so basically, um, you know, and, and this was discussed during the CSE meeting, unfortunately, I don't know, there is no communication between the school and the town boards to analyze the impact of, of these important projects and, and, and decisions. You know, if you increase the traffic volume, there are crosswalks. In a high school, basically, the kids go from high school to library, there is a lot of traffic and, 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 and we, we want to make it like a pedestrian friendly place. So we demand, we demand that uh, the traffic study be completed in an unbiased manner. It has to be unbiased, considering all these factors and all the recommendations from GPI. And there should not be any approval before that, this needs to be completed. Now coming to the conservation advisory com, uh, committee. So a major reason cited by CSE for favoring the cut through is that reduction of, uh, that reduction of point five mile. That's the distance we are, we are, you know, and I measured it on Google Maps, that will reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Really? This is the most hypocritical claim I've read in this project. And even if I take it face value that there is an appreciable net positive environmental impact, it can only happen if there is a substantial diversion of traffic to Windsor with significant reduction in time. But the town planning board is saying that nobody is going to cut through, only maybe 25% of the traffic volume. And there will be traffic coming measures. So where is the greenhouse gas reduction coming from? You know, I'll tell you the fact, so what's going to happen is that this plan is going to divert the pollution from River Road to Windsor Drive. And I've made this calculation, you know, based on EPA estimates, for a one and a half mile stretch of Windsor, each hour would produce 606 grams of carbon dioxide. With 1,000 more cars, Windsor Drive will see an increase of 606 kilograms of carbon dioxide per day. More than half metric ton. And with heavier vehicles, it will actually be more. So since Windsor is not open, as open as the River Road, this will have much more detrimental impact on our environment. So has the committee done any qualified analysis? Now coming to the streets committee. On May 29th, the complete streets committee unanimously recommended the extension based on the following. What are these? It's desirable for the homeowner. There is no such homeowner on Windsor. Did they take a survey? Property value increases because of the connection. Property value increases because of the connection to the park. In fact, appraisal shows up to thirty percent drop in prices. Not opinions, appraisals. Only twenty-five percent increase in traffic, which is again based purely on opinion. In fact, the CSC chairman says that it's okay to have increased traffic, but it's very much, but he very much opposed to any traffic increase in front of his house. And for that, I'm I'm not going into any personal stuff. Please read the May twenty-ninth issue of your Niskiuna. There is an article on the Viadelmer issue. They are having a similar situation. So this is pure double standard. Aren't these how public offices in a town like this supposed to work? You can see why we are frustrated. Okay? Now, we have not heard any quantified analysis on what problem the connection is going to solve for the town. There is no quantified analysis. You know, all this connectivity stuff and all this, you know, reference to ten pages in distributed stuff, there is no quantified analysis. A town planning works on its its engineering data. Yet with absolute disregard to our safety concerns, changing the character of the neighborhood, reduction in property valuation, you want to push the extension through. And how you are doing, you're collecting Robertson approvals from other committees, but with no real due diligence. This is just totally acceptable. You know, how can CSC approve something without the traffic study being actually completed? So if I if I look at the risks, okay, any project that you do, there's got to be a risk benefit analysis. You're increasing the the traffic, nine fifty additional fix, this is not nine fifty cars per day, okay? Nine fifty additional cars per day. And this is, the traffic study is not complete, it's not comprehensive, it's just taking one intersection. Hazard, safety concerns, there are forty plus children in Windsor Drive and plus many more in the surrounding streets. Even sitting here today or now talking, I can see the kids, you know, playing and 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 biking and walking outside. Thirty percent, up to thirty percent reduction in home valuation, more than half metric tonne of carbon dioxide dumping, dumped onto Windsor Drive per day. And a sense of loss of neighborhood. We can all see that. And for what? The perceived benefit is connected. Right? We are not connected today. Nobody cannot go to ShopRide. Just check how much time it will save if you take the the local roads and if this is, this is built. There is going to be zero savings in time. So there is no quantified and tangible benefit, but you are doing this at the cost of significant damage to the neighborhood. So let's not do this. Let's just build a multi-use bike. Thank you.
Thanks, Rajib. Um, I I had to mute you again. I'm sorry. It's really important to stay muted when other people are talking because for the people who are watching, they actually interrupt them. So just go back to that place where there's the red dot on mute, just like you did before. Um, and I just, while you're working on that, I just wanted, so I heard frustration from Connie, yet you're unmuted now. That, um, and also I rather say that the planning board is frustrated with the residents, and I mean, planning work is something where I can't feel frustrated with the residents at all. Like, we go through this process every
Laura, Laura.
Do it now, man. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Chengis.
I'm sorry, is your cellphone on also?
Oh, am I causing a major? No, it's not.
Just wanted to check. Thank you.
Is there an echo?
Yes.
Is it bad?
Yeah. Doesn't have the mute button on.
Oh, all right. Can I mute you again and then you can unmute?
Tita, hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, well, our 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 next speaker is Windsor Drive resident Daniela Begali.
Okay, Daniela, just before you go though, can I just say that, um, I just, I don't, I don't think that anybody really understands that the planning board isn't pushing one objective or not, like maybe you have to go back longer meetings, but when we were even deciding to call for the public hearing, what what our intention is, is to put what and Kevin said this really good at the start of the meeting, is to put what planning practices say, what our comprehensive map, street map says, what has been talked about by the town for thirty years, is to put that out there. Because if we didn't, and then at the last minute we swap that in, that would be unfair. But if we put like sort of the most impacted, the most impact plan out there and have that discussion with the residents, that's the starting point. And then we figure out what makes the most sense for the neighborhood. And and I and then I also just wanted to follow up with Rajib. Um, the planning board didn't ask for any changes in the language for the traffic recommendation that was done by the developer. Um, and we don't use that necessarily to justify our recommendation. That's why we have our own town designated engineer that reviews those changes and make sure that everything is on the up and up when the town is looking at it. Um, and I I I I think, and I had to just do a little bit of a thing as we're just going back and forth. Um, having that data and having you guys speak to the data is actually it's, um, sorry, all right. It's, um, it's just, oh, it, our committees are volunteers and we're and we all live in the town and we're all just trying to do the best thing that we can do for our town. Sorry, can you please go over there? Oh, and, um, we're all just trying our best. We're not trying to upset anyone. And that's why we're having this conversation so that we can find a place where we all understand each other. It's really just a communication issue. And I do have to say regularly, when people come to the planning board for a project, it's the first time they've come to the planning board and they are frustrated with the process. There's like, you got seven boards are all discussing at the same time. It's like, what are you guys all talking about? It, and I do recognize that it's, um, a long process that has a lot of boards that are involved, but I just want to put it out there. I think everybody's trying to get to the right place and, um, you know, if we can get better data and you guys have these points and we can incorporate them into how we're thinking about it, that's really what we're trying to do. And Chengis, you want to jump in there or anything? And then Daniela, you can go. I just felt like I said.
Sure, I just, Laura, since you were saying, and Danielle, I don't mean to take away your time, but Rajib and for the rest of the team on the on the call, the planning board has a responsibility and a process. That's why we called for a traffic study. And I just want to assure everyone that being the most significant piece of data that we've got, the traffic study carries a significant amount of weight in this and in every single the project that we've done. So I just want to reiterate to everyone that the traffic study is something that we deeply consider.
May I respond quickly, Chengis?
Yes, of course. It's meant to be back and forth.
So so I think first of all, um, um, you know, thanks for actually giving us the opportunity to to talk freely. And I do think that a traffic study needs to be completed. You know, this cannot be because we have not, we have just considered one intersection, you know, the cost is going to go up if we go to another intersection. Traffic study needs to be comprehensive. It is very clear, if you if you if you, you know, we all know, we go past G circle every day. There are a lot of vehicles that go past G circle towards Skynectity to North Street. It's not zero. Once you put that cut through, there is going to be a diversion of that traffic through Windsor. That volume is not taken into consideration. We we, I pointed it out, I I I sent several emails. No. I I I, you know, we get an email response showing a point on on Route seven where you can directly have a direct connection from Route seven to to, you know, Union Street and Casino. That's not the point. There's a lot of people that that live between that point and and who are going past the G circle towards Skynectity. That profit volume need to be considered. And we have, we have, you know, I I didn't personally participate in that May eleventh meeting, but I I watched YouTube live and I was thinking that what's going on? You're asking for twenty-five percent, you know, diversion, let's make it fifty percent diversion. Is it a negotiation? How much traffic you think will go? It's science. That's our frustration. And you think that, you know, that the traffic report that came back in, it's an updated report without any new data, just changing the language. What do you call it? So you say that the first traffic was was basically wrong, was incorrect? And was changed to say that the traffic, that road shares some characteristics with a collector so that it does not change its characteristic again. It was absolutely clearly written in the first study report that it is an urban local road, it will come close to a collector road. It did not say that it's it is going to be a collector road. It said it will come close to a collector.
So
I don't really understand what that updated
Could I, could I speak real quick? This is Mark Namboli from Creighton Manning.
Oh, sure. I just, I also wanted to jump in and say the CDTC and our TDE both said the ninety percent diversion was a good estimate. So I don't think that we're arguing about the ninety percent diversion anymore.
Yes, so let me, so let me just Mark, let me say one thing before you begin. Rajib, you're making an assumption that we actually don't think nine hundred and fifty cars is a big number. I'm not going to speak for the rest of the planning board because they'll be able to speak for themselves. But I'll speak for myself, and I know that based on our conversation, the last meeting, others feel this way too. That's why alternative percentages were tested against. Nine hundred and fifty cars is a significant number, and that's something that we need to take into consideration.
So Chengis, I would say that nine hundred and fifty cars is actually a small number compared to the number of cars that will go because we have not taken into consideration a significant volume.
For me, in my board experience, that number in and of itself is already large.
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, talking about, first and it was large, and we do recognize that it's a large impact. So, Mark, if you want to talk, and then I think Raul wants to speak, and then, um, if there's more traffic questions, we can continue. And then I think Daniela has, Daniela has the next issue.
Sure, thank you. Uh, I just want to say that Creighton Manning did not change the conclusions of the report at the request of the planning board. The the planning board asked us to provide some thresholds. We left the ninety percent number in the report because as the report states, the travel time is faster using Windsor Road, and we feel as we did earlier, the higher number is what's going to happen. The planning board specifically asked for the threshold assessment just to give them an idea for their own personal benefit. You know, what's, what would change if it went down to seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five? We left the ninety percent in as a worst case assessment, which is what we think is probably going to happen because of the travel time savings. We responded to a comment from the planning board. We didn't change the conclusions. And I'll I'll state right in page ten of the report, set specifically says it is noted that the connection may change the character and functional classification of the roadway due to increase through traffic. That is the like the fundamental conclusion from the the report that did not change. We provided additional data based on comments from the planning board asking for data. They also asked about volume thresholds. Are there specific volume thresholds that change between local roads and and collector roads? There are no black and white answers when it comes to classifications of roads. It doesn't change from, you know, and once you get over a thousand vehicles on a road, it automatically becomes a collector road. It's based on the character of the road, and we we tried to clarify the the characteristics of this road. Does the, does Windsor Drive have some characteristics of a collector road? Yes, there are some traffic that is going through those neighborhoods to get to River Road. Those are some characteristics and we, but we note in the report that the connection provided through Windsor through this proposed development would provide a more direct connection, so it would make it more of a more characteristic of a collector road. So we didn't change any of our assessments. We clarified the statements because they were, in in that meeting, there was questions. So again, we were responding to the planning board questions to provide additional information. We didn't change our conclusions. And I just want you to know that. And in terms of traffic coming to and from Skynectity, the comment that we received was, will there be additional traffic coming from the casino or Ellis Hospital going through this development? And that is why we picked those points to say, well, what is the reason for traffic coming to and from the casino or Ellis? What is their ultimate destination? Is it going to be up in that that those neighborhoods? Probably not. So we did not, we were not responding to all of Skynectity in that area. We were responding to a specific question that comment was about, specifically about the casino and Ellis Hospital. So we did not do a more global search about every single pocket of 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 uh of land within the the uh Skynectity to the west. It was in in addressing a specific comment. So that is why we addressed the comment the way we did. And the way, the reason why we revised the report was again in response to specific questions brought up by the planning board, not to change our conclusions, but just to provide more information because they were, it was asked of us.
Thanks, Mark. And again, um, when the planning board was going through those thresholds, I think it was the first time we had seen them and the thought was maybe if you add traffic coming, will the threshold change? Just understanding the thresholds. But we understand that the ninety percent is understood by the CDTC and our own TDE as to be a correct, probably a likely diversion number. So I don't think anybody is arguing the ninety percent now. Raul, I think I saw you unmuted. Do you want to try and speak?
I'd like to ask Mark one question.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Well, Mark, in in your initial study, you do specifically say that the increased traffic will raise the level of Windsor Drive to be a local collector road. And you you remove that, you back off from that position. Why was that language taken out of the amendment? If you wanted to provide an additional explanation, still keep that that level of increase in your letter. I didn't understand that.
I'd have to find the the exact. The the letter still states that we feel that this is going to be a collector road.
Well, it, you use, let me look at it.
Well, I'll be honest, all right, like I didn't even know the language.
So, so Mark, I I can read it out if you if you if you will, right? I have it marked on.
Well, I think, I think, Mark, didn't you explain that a collector road has certain attributes? The road exists today, has some of those collector attributes?
Correct. So it was a clarification that it's not a, it's not a strict local urban road, you know, it does have some characteristics. A road is not, is not A or B, it's not black and white. It has different characteristics and because of the other connections through some of the adjacent neighborhoods, there are some characteristics of a collector road that is, that is at Windsor. Again, there's, it's it's not A and B, it's not black and white. I did, we provided this table to show that is a, you know, FHWA guidelines or guidelines for what roads are, and you can see they sort of intermix with each other. You could have ten foot lanes, you could, you know, ten foot lanes could be a local road or a collector road.
So so hopefully, so so folks, hopefully this will help, but let me just tell you what my understanding is. My understanding is that the connection to River Road will change Windsor Drive to be an urban collector based on the traffic studies that were done. And I also understand from the revised traffic study that the way Windsor Drive is right now, it shares some characteristics with an urban collector. So if my understanding is incorrect, someone can correct it.
So so Chengis, that was not what was written in the in the first study report. What you said is is basically what is in the second study report or the updated study report. The first study report clearly says that Windsor Drive today is a local urban road and it will come closer to a vector road. The language has been very minutely changed, but it changes what it means.
The language was changed.
I'm sorry, Mark.
You know where it is. You can read it out yourself and you will see how that language has changed.
I I think regardless of of what you may characterize a road as in terms of actually naming it, obviously the issue is the amount of traffic. And I don't know if Mark has thoughts about what Rajib presented, but I would be very interested in understanding a little bit more about this scope and what intersections or what areas were not included in this study based on what Rajib presented just now. I don't know. I think somebody can see what you're saying at this point, Mark.
I I I couldn't comment on what Rajib presented at this meeting at this point. I would have to take a deeper dive into that and look at his slides. I mean, his slides were turned a little bit, so I was trying to understand where he was going with that. Like I said, our comment that he was, he was, I guess, focusing on that email that we were responding to a specific comment about the casino, so that should not be applied to whatever numbers he was talking about in 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 neighborhoods. That was, again, to a specific comment that we were responding to. So I I don't want to think that all, every part of the website of Skynectity is going to go the direction that we said that it was going to go. That was not the intent of that response. It was responding to a specific question.
Can I just say something here? One of the changes that we noticed is that in the original, it said, it is noted that One of the changes that we noticed is that in the original, it said, it is noted that connection may change the character and functional classification of the roadway due to increase through traffic. And in the updated one, the comment about changing the character is removed. And in other places, it talks about uh like ninety percent diversion. And the new one, it says the worst case scenario ninety percent, which kind of shifts it with loaded language that it's probably not going to happen. I think those are the slight um shifts in language that we were noting.
So, uh, can I?
Oh, yeah.
Say something here?
All right.
All right.
Well, well, Raul, for some reason, there's two of you.
I know, because the first time it didn't work, I was uh trying to get to it. Hopefully, there's no, hopefully, there is no uh feedback here. So this, this is what I want to say in case I get cut off. Uh, please listen to the recording of your discussions about the traffic report. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I'm mistaken. Please have a, a neutral party listen to the recording about the traffic report when it was presented for the first time and see what uh the planners are, uh, how they're speaking with uh Mark. And get their assessment in terms of how much they have been probing into the missing parts, perceived missing parts in that part of those reports. Find how many times they ask them, uh, Mark, are you missing out on certain elements? And then you, then let them also comment on how much they are grilling. They are giving Mark in terms of his assumption, his expert assumption of ninety percent. They are lightning, they are ridiculing the numbers down to minutes, how many few cars per minute. You just have somebody listen to this one and then give them the revised report to reflect, that's the final product. And let's, let's do what, what an independent person would say. Our, what we actually heard was clear cut. Mark was influenced unduly to change his report, no matter what he says. He changed his report. You can get a new neutral party attention with that. And second thing.
Folks, let me just reiterate.
No, no, wait a minute, Chengi Stan, please wait a minute, just a minute, thirty seconds. No, thirty seconds, wait a minute. Okay, but I'll get back to you. Go ahead, if you want to say.
Nine hundred and fifty cars, ninety percent diversion was a reasonable estimate based on Mark's report and based on our T D review, and I consider that to be a large number.
That's your opinion, but that does not change your, uh, you guys, uh, you're still getting the stamps based on the nine fifty. If it was two thousand cars, which is possible also, additional cars going from, I don't know, about five thousand to seven thousand or something like that with trucks going through. I mean, you, 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 your number is, is in terms of how unduly you guys influence it. By the way, in three, into three hours and thirty minutes plus ten seconds into the video, somebody asked Mark that your focus is on this van and not connection, right? Mark said yes. Then I think Chris Blau asked that how about other uh GPS based traffic points? To what Mark replied that, well, if you were to add other destinations, the cost of the study will exponentially go up. And so the requested of the study needs to strategically define focus points. Otherwise, cost will go up. I do not know who paid for this study and how much budget was assigned, but not enough from our view, our, our interest. And this third, incomplete study uh underscoped, underfunded is now basis of all these stamps, rubber stamps you guys are getting. Once again, I must ask people to, Laura, this is an action item for you. Please have an independent party listen to the video recordings uh and come to the independent conclusion. Because what you guys are, you are pushing back. You are saying that you've been neutral all along, you have all parties' interest in mind. You were just, I heard of, of the chairman saying that he would rather take the long route and he would go back to his home on River Road. He will never take Windsor Drive, I'll just, I'll continue on the longer route. Just an opinion based on which you have finalized the report, revised the report and connect, reduce it down and you still are defending it. But let's go to the third party and check it out. And then I would like to give it, unless you guys have anything to say, Daniella, we need to continue after that art and dimple. That's all I.
Thank you, Raul. Well, I'm willing to, to add, I don't know what happened there. Can you guys hear me? Okay, thank you. Uh, I, I would, I'd a little, I would like to continue that a little bit and, and take it in a different direction. I really appreciate Mr. Khan indicating that he feels like that is a lot of traffic. I, I can't see anybody, I don't know what.
Hold on. Um, the person who signed in is named Diad. Can you please um un-present your screen? There should be a link at the bottom that says stop presenting. We can actually see your phone, screen, you can see your phone. We can kick him off here, hold on, Danielle.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay.
I'm sorry that he was challenging. So I really appreciated uh Mr. Khan saying that he felt like those were a lot of vehicles. And in that same meeting in, um, earlier in May, uh, somebody, and I don't remember who it was, made a comment about, we need to really think about this if it changes the character, the look and feel of this neighborhood. So given that it sounds, I guess I would like a little bit of feedback. It is a discussion right from the planning board regarding this volume of traffic. The fact that it may not be fully comprehensive, given some missing data points here, but what your thoughts are at this point regarding changing the look and feel of this neighborhood with this traffic volume.
I, I can address that briefly. I'm, I'm glad Daniella, you kind of refocused uh this conversation on the traffic study because um I think that's really got to be one of the key takeaways. And certainly for me, uh, as one of the co-co-leads on this, it is. Um, it's a hard question to answer, uh, but the traffic report does give us hour by hour estimates and it focuses specifically on the peak hours. Um, and, and I think no one is better.
Oh, Patrick. Patrick, you have to unmute yourself. Sorry about that. Art, can you mute yourself?
All right.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I want to first say uh, thank you, Daniella. I, I feel like it's a very um meaningful comment made to sort of, um, I think that kind of refocuses the discussion of traffic and um, you know, in a way that I think a lot of, I'll, I'll just speak for myself, but I, I, in conversations with other planning board members, I think a lot of us want to, our main takeaway from this traffic study to be is, is what is the impact on the, the, the neighborhood? And, and how, how might it impact the, the neighborhood feel of Windsor Drive? And, and one, one, I think, important piece of feedback that um I'd like to hear from anyone on Windsor Drive um, or, or all of you is, um, you know, what, what is, what, what does um peak hour traffic impact really mean to you? You know, the report goes into detail on um rush hour impact, hour by hour. And uh, you know, looking at, looking at what, what a hundred cars per hour looks like at eight AM or five PM. That, that's really, um, I think that's, that's where we can have a meaningful conversation about, um, you know, what, what your experience is now and during the school year. And um, you know, regardless of, of um, what, what the ultimate diversion rate is, uh, I think we're all deeply concerned about, you know, what, what um, what the traffic situation is currently on Windsor Drive and um, yeah.
Well, and I just, I just want to um tag onto that while you guys are thinking about it. Um, when, and I touched on this just briefly, when, when we look at connectivity, there isn't, it's, it is always a balance. There isn't any question, I don't think from the planning board, that there wouldn't be an impact to Windsor Drive. No one's sweeping the, the impact to Windsor Drive under the carpet and saying there will be none. The question is, is it a balance? Like, can we do traffic calming, traffic mitigation, the point where we can retain that character of the neighborhood? Or can't we? Um, is the, is the connection from the greater parts of Niskiuna to Blatnik Park and to the town center overlay district, is that a benefit enough to the entire town that we, you know, that we would make this connection and then try and mitigate? That's really just the balance in the conversation that we're trying to have. And I know, and I, I know that there's a lot of stress that's associated with the times that we're in with COVID right now. And so it can make things feel very personal and very like we're under attack. Um, but I do think that the communication is really the key. And so by going back and forth and listening to each other, and I'm just speaking for myself, the planning board can jump in here. I didn't even notice that change in the words for the traffic report. Um, I mean, I was really just honing in on the numbers and the numbers didn't change. So I didn't feel that there was any change in that traffic report recommendation. I didn't even catch that. I mean, the planning board can speak um for themselves, but um, I think that that, that change in words was meaningless to me.
Laura, this is Chris Lefal of the planning board. I, I just wanted to mention, it was a comment made about the first version and the second version and the data being different. And I think you just said it a moment ago, I just want to stress, the, the raw numbers, right? The raw data, um, those, those numbers and estimations haven't changed. We, we added or augmented different understandings of, of diversion, right? Ninety percent versus, what does fifty percent look like? Because some of us might not have thought ninety, ninety percent made sense. Um, those are opinions, whether we think it makes sense or whether we think someone's going to take the long, the shortest path when it's only a minute difference, those are opinions. But the data from one to two, and as I looked through it, it didn't change at all, right? But there may be some more definitions or descriptions that, you know, were enhanced based on different options of the data. The second point I wanted to make was that um, from each one board member's perspective, the time savings that are kind of being highlighted by some of the comments, these are not the drivers, at least that's not a driver for me. This is not about saving or shorting commute time. This is what Laura was talking about, the benefit or drawback to having connectivity for the overall neighborhood. In other words, those on Windsor may enjoy the option to go east, east, west, north, south in certain roads. But when the connections are there, then other neighboring residents may be able to enjoy connectivity options that they don't have today, right? So the savings of time, I just want to make this point clear, this is not a time savings decision in any way. This is connectivity, getting feedback from all of you on what the benefits of that connectivity might be or might not be.
Yeah, hey, hey, sorry, Chris, and I'll just jump on, I didn't mean to interrupt you. This is John Stan. I want to say again, from in my personal pers- time savings of travel time are completely irrelevant to anything I would use in deciding on this project.
So there's two.
So there's Dan Polashak, if I can chime in. So I lived on Windsor Drive and now I'm on one of the connecting streets, like one house away from Windsor Drive. So one question was, how does it affect us really? So to drive off of St. Anne on to Windsor Drive with a hundred extra cars zooming by is more difficult. That's one. Two, when high school around seven thirty has that influx, we are already standing thirty cars deep at Windsor intersection uh to an end verb and just kind of waiting, uh, almost like getting into Washington, uh, you know, Bridge in our Manhattan, one of the roads. And we're just kind of like taking our turns, trying to get through. And then um, you know, to the comment that Laura is making and everybody's, it's wonderful to say connectivity, it's wonderful to say that the entire community is going to benefit. But are you literally in that sentence saying that everyone now is going to be driving past us? Is that, that's connectivity, right? Or are you saying that I don't know this, but I'm going to enjoy this? That I'm now going to be able to be connected so much better?
Sorry, I wanted to, could I add something?
Sure.
So I wanted to add a couple of things. One about connect, connectivity. So if you look, I'm getting, I'm not.
You have two, two audios.
What do I have to do?
No, go ahead.
Okay. If, if you, if you, if you're looking for a connect, connectivity, so what are you trying to connect?
Oops, gosh darn it, wait, I'm sorry. I, I was muting you because I was muting people that had feedback and then like, please unmute yourself. Javed, please unmute yourself.
Okay, all right, I got it. So if you look at the neighborhoods adjoining neighborhoods, okay? So if you look at Rosendale Estates and their access to the town center, they have already Fox Hollow, they have St. Anne's and they have Rosa Road, Rosa Boulevard going through. So there's three already connections for them. They already have multiple accesses to Blatnik Park. Um, many roads through them were already emptied out. So connectivity for them is already there. So the next area of connectivity, if you're looking at it, is Old Niskiuna. They have several accesses already through there. And the question then is for a six, one minute and ten second savings in driving, is it worth destroying the entire neighborhood and the feel of it? The next area is people coming up from River Road. They also have multiple access pathways and actually it's almost easier and faster. They have just as much access going up through um their GE circle. So what you're going to get really gained out of this? All those people that are, have connectivity already have an access pathway to go through there. Um, so I don't think that that is going to give any extra benefit to the town. They already have pathways.
Can I add to that point right quick? This is Chris.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
What? I'm sorry.
Can you hear me or no?
No, I can't. Let me mute myself and maybe I can hear you better.
The, can you hear me any better now? I know you're, you're playing with your audio, I'm doing a little test for you.
Javi, do you want to give him a thumbs up or us a thumbs up if you can hear us?
Obviously you can't, so we didn't see a thumbs up.
Um, so, um, Dan Polashak, I just wanted to say really quickly, I am not trying to say anything incendiary. I'm trying to follow up on some research I was doing earlier. I'm just on planning practice and any, anything that you read from the American Planning Association, you know, it has a dichotomy, it won't directly recommend any um specific connection. And even in codes, you'll see this, the point is to strive for connectivity. But you, you know, when you look at these towns like Beaverton, Oregon, Boulder, Colorado, there's some places in North Carolina that have incorporated connectivity in their code. They also recognize that with connectivity comes um additional traffic in the rec, in the residential neighbors, neighborhoods. And you can find case studies where all of these different suburbs have struggled with, so new developments, very easy to make that connectivity. And where you have that, the rub is with the infill where, you know, people have been living with their street in a certain way. And um, so they're saying like they, you have to balance, you know, the connectivity goal with the impact to residents. And one of the things that they do discourage in connectivity is cut-throughs. So they, you know, there are certain ways to try and, and analyze it and figure it out. Um, the connectivity with residential neighborhoods, there's no question that's a benefit. It's good for biking, it's good for walking, it's good for services, buses, all that stuff, the emergency services. There's no question that connectivity is good. The, the thing that you have to balance it with is, is where, which we're talking about now. Um, is it, you know, is the cut-through going to be too much of a cut-through? And then are there things you can do if that cut-through makes sense for the whole town that make it not a cut-through anymore, that make it just a residential connectivity again? So you're trying to get the residential connectivity without the cut-through. And it's not meant to be incendiary, we're meant to be communicating back and forth and how this works, if that makes sense.
All right, thank you for, for that answer. I mean, it makes sense, but I'm just trying to reconcile the comment. to reconcile the comment that was made again about three some hours into the last meeting saying, well, it's only gonna be like two extra cars uh per minute. Uh, who would even notice this? And the next very common saying that, well, we're gonna connect the whole town, the whole town is gonna benefit. You guys are just standing in the way of the whole town benefiting from this wonderful connectivity. And yet, we're gonna connect through a ninety-degree turn, tiny little new neighborhood that right now, at least the last time I saw, is gonna have one exit onto a road that literally in that traffic study has somebody driving ninety-three miles an hour. You tell me how long it's gonna take that car to stop when my kid tries to cross that on the bike path? That's gonna be there because bike path is bike path, right? It's totally safe, correct? Well, guess what? That's not gonna be that safe when everybody is trying to cross that and some of you who is going ninety-three miles an hour. And by the way, there's twenty more who are going above seventy-five miles an hour. And sure, you know, it's random, hopefully midnighters doing this, but you never know. And that's what we're worried about. We're, we're connecting, we're not connecting. Are we gonna have big trucks going through? Somebody, somewhere mentioned, well, no big trucks. So that means no fire trucks? Or does it mean fire truck going down Windsor Drive in the middle of the night to shave off, what, thirty seconds, somebody said? Whereas you can go down River Road and get into that community much more directly from Balltown right across to where they need to go.
Sure. A weight limit is um just for commercial traffic and it doesn't impact emergency vehicles. Um, they'd still be up, going up and down. And um, I think we mentioned this before, it's not always about um the time that it would take an emergency vehicle to get there. Like, a lot of times it's like, if you have a windstorm and there's blockages to certain roads um that make it harder to get. So the more connect, the more connections you have for emergency vehicle, it, it's usually actually more related to, we always say a tree falling down. It can be a lot of things, like an accident or something. Like, sometimes there's just a sort of cascading, like there's a car accident in one intersection and then somebody's house catches on fire or whatever, you can't get to it. It's just that emergency vehicles prefer all those different connections. But um, but a weight limit would only restrict uh commercial traffic, truck traffic. Okay, so um, Javed, can you hear us again? Can you give us a thumbs up? Okay, good. So Chris, do you want to respond to his question?
Yeah, this is Chris Leflam. And I, I was, I was one of the, the members that made, that made the, the comment or basically just ran the math about two and a half cars. And I just want to explain why that number came out. And it wasn't an opinion and it wasn't to devalue. It was the actual math. Um, uh, I believe Chairman, uh, it wasn't Darpino, um, McPartland was probably talking about this earlier, is to, you know, there's a certain aspect of a traffic study that is, that is more significant than others. And a thousand cars is a lot of cars. We all agree that's not an insignificant number. Um, we're trying to value or balance what the busy hour looks like today versus tomorrow. And it is already a busy street. We've been, gotten a lot of feedback from a lot of folks. Most of us do at one point drive on that road. I understand the St. Anne turn that Scott was referring to onto Windsor. Um, but if you look at the, the worst-case scenario, what, what they're describing, you know, Creighton Matt Manning describing is ninety percent. Um, the comments that Javed made a moment ago are what, are going through uh the planning board's mind constantly. That is, and Javed, if I misunderstood you, you know, you can, you can mention it, but even if I didn't, there's a, there's some rationale to it. Chairman had mentioned, and some of us mentioned, is ninety percent reasonable? And if the CAC and the CSC is saying ninety is what we should be planning on, we're gonna take their advice. But there's a lot of folks that have a thought that the people on, you know, across north, let's say north of River Road, may actually still choose to take the circle because it's only a minute. And there's a hard ninety through that neighborhood. And a lot of us think like that. You know, the shortest distance you would think would make the most rational sense, but when it comes to the actual practice, um, I think Javed was making a very good point. A lot of folks are probably still gonna take that circle because what's a minute? But what I wanted to get back to was that if you break down a hundred and ninety, I think it was a hundred and forty-nine cars during uh the peak hour in the morning, what does that really mean, right? A thousand cars, ten thousand, three thousand cars going on Balltown Road, those are big numbers, it's hard to decipher. But a hundred and forty-nine cars on Windsor during the peak hour in October, which was when the sample was taken in twenty nineteen, triangulating cell phone data, um, is two and a half cars per minute. So if you sit in an intersection and you're waiting for your opening for a minute, is it a, a hundred cars you're trying to navigate through? Is it twenty-five cars? Is it ten? Is it two? A, and that's what I was trying to do is sit, literally Scott at, I, I think I got Scott, Scott, it says Mom's Secrets. I think you were Scott. Um, but sitting at St. Anne, to, turning onto, onto Windsor on a, on a morning and I dropped my kids off at school, it was two and a half at that peak hour at ninety percent. So worst-case scenario is a hundred percent. So maybe it's two point six. If it was closer to fifty percent, it might be one point nine cars. So the reason why that's brought up is not to minimize it. It is simply reducing the math to that sample of time that is most significant to us as residents. So I just wanted to comment on that. It doesn't show my decision. I just wanted all, all of us to put yourselves in that busy hour, sitting there, what is it you're actually trying to navigate?
Yeah, and to um Rajib and I think Connie's point, um, you know, that's just looking at the ninety percent diversion of that one route, and the traffic study doesn't take into account other intersections. So um, you know, uh, it's just a kind of a early stab, best stab at how the traffic that currently goes up to the research circle, back down to Windsor Van Antwerp intersection, how much of that traffic would get diverted? And that's the number that we're looking at there. Um, I know I've got a comment on here from Scott that he wants to say something. And then I, I think that probably Danielle still, Daniella still has another thing to comment on. And then I said, Art said that there were five, and I've got the comprehensive plan so far, traffic study, and then Daniella. So I'm thinking that we still have two more things to get to. So um, go ahead, Scott, and then maybe we can go back to Daniella.
Yes, hi. I just wanted to respond to Chairman McPartland about what does traffic look like on a, on a normal day or, or not during peak hours. Um, we've been on Windsor Drive in this area forty-eighty since the development opened up nine years ago and had little kids, and they like to play in the front yard. And safety, of course, being of utmost concern, we had put one of those caution, slow traffic, uh, you know, kids at play signs right out on the apron of the road. And I kid you not, no sooner that I, did I put that out, within an hour, a car had run it over, was too close to the side. I mean, what do we need to do further to protect our kids? God forbid it's anyone's kid that gets hit by a car. I don't care if it's two point six extra cars, one point nine, we don't need the increased traffic. This is a safety concern and that must be dealt with. Keep it on River Road, keep it on the major thoroughfares, not through our residential neighborhood where there are forty-plus kids playing and speed and traffic are a problem now. Why are we looking to increase it, which is only going to give us less safety and potentially more problems? And God forbid it's any of our kids. No one wants that on their heads. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Yes, thanks, Scott. Um, I think being a planner for like ten years and having a six-year-old, who you may have seen because we're all at our houses or whatever, she just popped in for a second. Um, we all understand that concern and nobody's minimizing it all. And um, thank you for those comments. Um, Daniella, do you want to go?
Sure. I think um, I do want to, I can't help myself here, uh, read a couple of comments from some of my neighbors talking about, you know, having children that play in the front yard from four to six, which is rush hour traffic. Um, you know, to Mr. McPartland's comment regarding how does it impact us? And I think to add on to what Scott said, there was a woman on the Conservative, I'm kidding, Advisory Council who actually looked to buy on Windsor and chose not to buy on Windsor due to the traffic. She actually made that comment during a May meeting and said that the traffic was, the speed of the traffic was significant enough to cause her to buy elsewhere. So I know you're hearing, I appreciate everything that everybody's saying. I speak for all the residents in that sense. Sounds like you're trying to understand what our concerns are, and we do appreciate that. And um, it's important that you don't take them lightly because we are worried every single day for our children and feel that there is already an issue. Why would we be compounding that issue? So that'll be, you know, a couple of additional comments, if I may, um, speak to both emergency response and reduction in value. I, I'd love to get a little bit more clarification on both of these things. Um, we've, we've heard you say that you have, you have to look at the data, right, and listen to the experts. But it does seem from our perspective, when we review some of these recorded uh meetings that you're having, that you're dismissive of some of these expert opinions. And it sounds like that's not your intention, but it's certainly the perception of the residents when viewing these meetings in real time and the comments that are being made. So I want to share that I don't think my neighbors and my friends are, they're not trying to be combative here. That is what is happening when we review these meetings and art, you know, when we review these recorded meetings. But regardless, in regarding expert opinion, it feels like those types of expert opinions are being discounted. We have two independent appraisers who indicate that our property value would be adversely impacted. These opinions are provided by professionals, the residential appraisers that have been in this industry for decades, and they estimate anywhere from a ten to thirty-five percent reduction in value. These appraisers conferred with additional appraisers and real estate agents in order to come up with these findings, in addition to doing a paired sales analysis. The appraisers are indicating that, in their opinion, the increased traffic flow would have this impact on value. He actually states that he would make a location adjustment anywhere from ten to thirty-four percent based on his findings when completing an appraiser in the future. The second appraiser indicates that this road extension would interfere with the definition of quiet enjoyment. And I'm not trying to be, I, I'm just gonna let you know what that definition is, although I'm sure many of you do already know, is defined as the right of an occupant of real property, particularly of a residence, to enjoy and use premises in peace and without interference. He states that this interference would cause a negative impact on the market value, but not only for the residents of Windsor Drive, but additionally for this brand-new neighborhood, the residents of the Kelso Subdivision. This speaks directly to marketability, saleability, and desirability for a home. The other thing I'll throw out there is there have been a couple of comments about the double yellow line, double yellow line being removed, double yellow line needs to come back, you know, double yellow line. And so I will say that when we bought our home, and you know, I've only been fortunate enough to be a Niskiuna resident for two, for two years now. We moved here from Boston Lake. It was a very desirable area to live. I really want to do everything we can to maintain that and to keep it that way. The homes on the lower side of Windsor, specifically referring to the once-passed Fox Hollow, has never had double yellow line. There's never been a double yellow line on this part of Windsor as far back as two thousand and eleven in Google Maps. Um, and I think I provided that image um maybe some time ago. So you're on the board to represent the residents of Niskiuna as well, and make a comment to Mr. Darpino, and I hope I'm saying your last name correctly, comment regarding page five of the comprehensive plan. It also states very specifically that future transportation system improvements should minimize impacts to existing neighborhoods. And so instead, by potentially looking at this cut-through, you could be creating a terrible situation for the residents in this neighborhood, including interfering with the value of our homes. And as an aside, um, if you polled all buyers, because I'm in residential lending, if you polled all buyers, you would realize that reading a comprehensive plan is not a normal part of the home buy process. So I, I think, I do want to have something about emergency response, but I do want to pause here for a second and say, have you looked at this decrease in value? Is this not a factor in, is this an acceptable outcome? What are your thoughts regarding anywhere from a ten to thirty-five percent potential decrease in value when comparing this road now to other roads that have similar traffic patterns?
Hi, Danielle. My name is Mike Scrubian Tennis. I haven't seen the appraisal. I don't know if those appraisals could be distributed to the board, but if you, if you procured a couple of appraisals, I think that'd be relevant and um information I'd like to see.
I appreciate that. I have provided them. I'm happy to provide them again.
And, and Danielle, just, you know, just one thing. Let me, let me just comment on this. So typically, appraisals, actual appraisals of property value is something that the planning board does not have in our checklist of things to look at. So I'm glad it is residents that you did that. However, there's gotta be a completeness to it. Did, did your appraiser take into account that the Windsor neighborhood would now have direct roadway access to a park?
Mr. Khan, no offense, we already have direct access to a park. I mean, there's like seventeen different ways to get to Blatnick Park. That doesn't actually increase the value.
Danielle, I asked you, I asked you a very specific question. Did you-
Yes, the planning board was well aware of what the connectivity would provide us. I gave them the entire, I gave them the plot plans, I gave them the traffic study. They reviewed all of that material. So I would say that yes, they were aware of how close that connectivity would get us to Blatnick Park.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, and those, um, those did come with the comments that we got, I think, right before COVID nineteen kind of shut us down. Um, I know that I took a look at them. Um, I think we got, I read them. It was something like a hundred and thirty pages of comments, but definitely I will send them back out to the board and it is relevant. And um, we do appreciate that those came in to us.
And then the last thing I just want to, from my part here, is I, I would like to get some additional information regarding emergency response. Um, I understand what you're saying, Laura, regarding, um, you know, these potential situations, but um, I guess what I would say to that is, um, we would like to know specifically what scenarios this would benefit and have these scenarios ever occurred? How often have they occurred? Can you provide data, details of the routes, timing, as well as historical data regarding this, these scenarios? We have tested in time, many scenarios, we cannot find a benefit. So I'd like an op, we'd like an opportunity to review these findings and talk about how often a catastrophic event has happened in the last four or many years that would actually make this cut-through make sense and potentially have been um a true positive from an emergency response perspective.
Sure. Um, so um, emergency responders, and, and um, we sent the plans to the uh Fire District One to just have them comment on it. And just generally speaking, both emergency responders and highway, um, just for utilities and those kind of things, look for connectivity. They look for those alternative routes. Um, I, um, I think it would be very difficult to do a study that, you know, would look at, okay, you know, how much time is it gonna save if a tree falls here? It's just kind of a random thing. And I think it's more of, again, a balance. So you, you could look at the number of ways that you can get to Windsor Drive. If there's ten of them already, uh, and this is just adding one more, then the benefit for like a tree falling is probably minimal. Whereas like, you know, if the fire station was right at the end of your road and um, right now, they'd have to go all, you know, like all the way down to Riverdale and not up Chestnut and everything, then obviously that's a very clear benefit. But I think that when you look at connectivity, any emergency responder is gonna say that entrance, that, that connection is gonna help. Um, I think when you see the time, we don't typically have, obviously hurricanes, the time that you might see a large amount of trees coming down or a large amount of obstructions to the road where you could benefit from a connection in New York, or, or like very large thunderstorms or ice storms. And the frequency that we get those, I think the last ice storm that we had that took down a ton of trees was probably seven or eight years ago now. And that largely affects like Old Niskiuna because they have all those silver maples. When they're all on the street, when they come down, it's problematic. Windsor has little trees. If you have an ice storm and one of the trees on Windsor comes down, probably even still going to be able to get around. So again, that comment isn't specific. It's, it's something that's meant to be taken in a matrix of understanding what are the benefits and what are the costs? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think I really appreciate that comment. It does. And, and again, I don't, none of us want to stand in the way of, of positive emergency response. We'd all want someone to be able to get to our home efficiently if we were the one having the emergency, right? Of course. So, but just trying to get some color and understanding about, um, you know, there already is so much connectivity. Where is the benefit here in having this? Because um, there are so many ways to get to so many places already.
You know, I just want to bring up this one little point. It's something that has come up in different comments, if I, if I may just make one, one, one comment. Uh, you know, Joel's project, right, is, is, is also subject to this decision for the board. Some of those benefits that we're kicking around are to them. So if there, if you isolate neighborhoods with cul-de-sacs or a single access to River Road and you limit their- and you limit their ability to have access to things like life safety or emergency services. The benefit of connectivity, the broad concept of connectivity is to provide diversity, mitigate against uh obstruction of paths and promote um more even distribution of traffic. So I just want to point out that the, the residents of the development would benefit, right? And that's, and that's part of making it a Niskuna experience to us with this new project, it's application, it's an application to Forest. Um, and then also the neighborhood, River Duro, Briar, you know, those streets you all as residents of Windsor enjoy passing over. Well, that you may not pass over those and it would decrease the traffic on those, on those streets, right? So just want to put that out there.
Chris, I'm glad you said, and you know, I just want to make a comment and I hope everyone recognizes, I'm trying to at least be clear about what's in my head based on the data and information we've got. So I think someone had asked a question earlier. I think it was Javed, what does connectivity mean? As a planning board member for the town of Niskuna, specifically here, what it means to me is connecting the Windsor community to River Road by an alternative path that does not take them down Van Antwerp and the GE circle. And connecting the new Kelts Farm community once it's built out, because that is the application that we're legally bound to address. That's in front of us that started this. Um, to the rest of Niskuna without having them to go down River Road and the GE circle. That being said, we're, I'm trying to mitigate against the connection becoming a cut through for everybody else who has nothing to do with those residences, right? So I wanted to answer what connectivity means to me. And I just also wanted to build it off of what Chris was saying. It's, it's the factors that we need to take into assessment. Who is that connectivity for? It's for the residents of those places today. As they arrive there in Kelts Farm, if and when this project is approved and built. And also for the residents in Niskuna 10, 15, and 50 years from now. Right? And so as a planning board member, we've got to take that into consideration, right? If the role of the planning board was to do what the residences want, right? It's clear what the answers would be. Agreed? But our role is actually to think about what this town planning look like for the town of Niskuna, which is going to outlive all of us.
But Mr. Khan, uh, if you, what you're saying and what just Chris mentioned about the benefit to the Kelts Farm community is true, then why is uh the developer Joe has been vocally opposed to this cut through? A benefit what they will get will be there is a cluster of houses which will see thousand cars going through them. Why would Joel be, why would Joel would be opposed from the beginning?
So Joel is online and I could just, all I could do is have Joel answer that question. If Joel wants to, because I can't answer it for Joel.
Well, we very well know uh his answer because in fact, I must say that he is the one who initiated this uh uh activity. We only found out about this connectivity from Joe.
Yeah, so.
And his opposition to Joe. Or to the connectivity. So what you are saying is not absolutely correct. The way you talk about benefit to the, he would know what is beneficial to the Kelts Farm community than any of you guys, I would think.
Joel's the developer.
Yeah, Joel's the developer.
Who's not represented on this call, sorry, who's not represented on this call are the actual residents of that development. And to, to Mr. Khan's point, into the future, right? So this snap, this snap of time, this, you know, frame of this moment of time for all of us, I agree. We, we heard the response and we also you know, at this moment in time would feel the impact more so than others, but over time it needs to be a balance for that Niskuna experience across multiple neighborhoods. Not with too much connectivity, but with a reasonable amount of intended connectivity. And that stub road does make a difference. You know, that, that stub road represents emergency service down the road. It represents the benefit and the pleasure of the residents in the surrounding neighborhoods.
Yep. Right. I just made that point, right? Team, it should be clear to all of us here, right? The developer represents certain interests. And the town planning board has to represent certain other interests. Right? Including your interests, right?
Yes.
Can I say, do you feel that you might be making a assumption on behalf of the?
I'm going to make a glib comment, knowing fully well that it's glib. If you guys want Joel on your side, tell him to withdraw the application.
Uh, I have a. Hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah. In several meeting, meeting agenda statements, I read that the, this proposal would allow the town and developer to examine the corridor and implement traffic coming measures throughout the length of Windsor Drive. So my question is to the town planning board please. Why town planning board is trying to connect these two, you know, totally different thing, cut through with mitigating of speeding? You know, Windsor Drive has this problem for the last several years. And residents addressed, you know, we wanted to put stop lines or other measures. Town planning board ignored us. So why is there suddenly so much concern? And my second comment is if town planning board or town planner, whoever it is wants to, I mean, bring, I mean, uh, bring about some coming measures. We, the Windsor Drive residents, residents should be involved in that discussion. Not the developer or not just the developer or the town planning board should take that decision. We should be part of that discussion. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that comment. There's no question um that if we were looking at traffic common measures for the entirety of Windsor Drive corridor. Um, that, that is actually a town board action, which hopefully the planning board would be involved with and help. Um, and it would definitely involve the residents. And I think that um, you know, just from the public comments that we heard at the public hearing when we held it, and Genghis, you can jump in here too. Um, we recognized separate apart from any development that's happening now. Windsor Drive as a corridor has a very large, open, um, wide visual corridor. Um, which is contributing probably to the speeding. And so separate and apart from the development, if the town wants to look at that corridor for some traffic mitigation, that it's definitely probably a worthwhile effort. You, you guys may hear this if you, if you watch any town board or other polling board meetings. It's not a problem that's specific to just Windsor Drive. So I mean, we have speeding problems on a variety of corridors and we have a fair amount of speeding that refers to old Niskuna and people are trying to avoid Baltimore Road. So it's, it's a question of um, you know, funding and when, you know, when you have all of these competing interests at the town level for traffic coming on a, you know, townwide basis, like, you know, it's a balance, it, everything in a balance, but definitely um, we can recognize that Windsor Drive would, would definitely benefit separate and apart from anything to traffic coming measures and that you guys would be involved if we were going to implement them.
Right. And, and Laura, you know, since, since she asked me, I just want to comment on this. And remember, I'm, I'm just trying to again, to be clear about what my thought processes and perspectives are from the data information I'm seeing. None of the residences of Windsor Drives, I don't, I think would ever be happy or satisfied with the current situation on Windsor Drive. Is that statement true? Because I think when everyone bought their houses, they didn't think it was going to become a one-way street to the high school. Right? With the connections on St. Anne and um, you know, uh, I forget what the other one is there that actually shaves off uh 30 seconds for people coming from the town. So Windsor Drive, from my perspective, has already gotten to a state where I could see it as being undesirable for the residents. And again, like we've said before, the addition of those cars, right? Yes, it's going to make things worse from that regard. But we are having the discussions we're having and we're talking about it. And hopefully, you know, our communications continue and get us to a good place.
So I, do you want to um get on, I think we've got three. Do you want to try and get to four and five? And then I know that there are some other, there's some kind of ideas that the planning board, you know, would probably want to discuss with the residents to see what their thought were on those as well. So do you want to get to four and fives?
Yes, why don't we go to uh the next point, which is number four, which believe it or not is connectivity, which we've been talking about for the last uh, the last hour. Um, I've lived on Windsor Drive since 1994. My wife, Lydia and I are the longest tenured residents. And we've seen with every new phase of development, we've seen an increase in traffic. Um, we live three houses from the intersection of uh Windsor and Van Antwerp. And in the morning, uh, and in, and after school, the line is considerable, probably a block and a half as people try to go through there. And it's going to increase significantly with the additional 120 cars or 140 cars. But what, what my question is, the connectivity is going to help people be connected to a park and to places of employment. So we're going to help somebody from Regent Street or Rotterdam or Scotia to get to work in the morning or to go to a baseball game at Blatnick Park. But at what expense? The expense is the, the people who live on Windsor who are directly affected by this cut through. Um, the fact that, what impresses me the most in the traffic study of Creighton Manning is an increase of 950 cars a day. We already have 300, $3,600, 3,600 cars going through that road. We're increasing it by that more. That effect is significant. So we're going to give somebody a benefit to connect at the expense of the people who live there now. We're complaining about traffic, about noise, about noise pollution. And we're talking about the quality of our neighborhood. We have submitted two appraisals from two licensed firms to show property values will decrease. That's significant. That hurts us. We live here. We're the affected most by, by anybody else who's going to go down this road. So please consider that. There are many other alternatives that you can take. We've been talking about them tonight. You know what they are. It's interesting to note that the developer, when he first submitted his plan, wasn't worried about a connection for his people to get to, to town hall or to the market. He obviously was not going to provide for the cut through. The planning board wanted him to do it. He wasn't even concerned about it. So please consider the needs and the requests of the people who live on Windsor Drive. We're the ones most directly affected by this. Please don't ignore that. And I just want to mention two more things. And looking at the ordinances that, that you have to observe and follow. I'm going to mention just 220 dash 60 of the uh Niskuna Town Ordinance regarding the standards for granting special use permits. The language indicates there that the decision is required to preserve the general character of the neighborhood. I cannot see, looking at this objectively even, how the, the character of the Windsor Drive neighborhood is going to be the same if we have that cut through. And one more section. The definition of an average density development. 220 dash 28 of the Niskuna Town Ordinance, which says such development shall not be detrimental to the health, safety, or general welfare, welfare of the persons residing in the vicinity or injurious to property or improvements within its proximity. Clearly, clearly, this is going to be a detriment to the people who live in that neighborhood and to our homes. It injures us. It injures us. So please consider that uh in your deliberations. Those are my comments. And our, our last speaker, last but not least is Dimple Gassy is next.
Thanks, Art.
Hi, is everybody able to hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Yes.
Uh, my name is Dimple Gassy. I am a resident of 4076 Windsor Drive. I am a mother, a physician, and a neighbor. I want to bring to your attention serious risk of harm that Windsor Drive connection will bring to our children. We have approximately 40 children living on Windsor Drive and its neighboring streets. Of those children, approximately 70% are elementary school kids. Many of our high school children walk or use bike path to go to school. As estimated by traffic study, there will be an increase of approximately 950 vehicles a day. That number is grossly underestimated and likely will be more. In 2018, according to United States Department of Transportation, about 6,000, 6,000 pedestrians were killed in the United States by automobiles. And 80% of those fatalities occurred in urban areas. 19% of pedestrians were children aged 14 or younger. As for data, of all the roads, urban neighborhood streets have the highest accident rates. Which is a crash rate of 1.6 per 100 million vehicle miles as compared to 0.6 for interstate. Turning a dead end or a cul-de-sac street into a through road causes traffic volume to increase manyfold. Along with an increase in average vehicle speed. The result of which is an increase in both vehicle, pedestrian, and cyclist accidents. Children between the ages of five and nine are particularly at risk to traffic-related injury. Besides the safety concerns I just raised, this high vehicular volume will be subjecting Windsor Drive residents to approximately 585 kgs of CO2 per day. Based on EPA estimates of 411 grams of CO2 per car per mile. This would seriously impact the health and well-being of not only the residents, but also pedestrians and cyclists using the multi-use path. Walking and biking will certainly not be a pleasant experience with increase in traffic and will discourage people from using those pathways. This would seem counterproductive to town's plan of encouraging use of bike and pedestrian pathways. Last but not the least, the cut through will also increase the crime rate of our neighborhood. Studies have shown that hierarchical discontinuous street systems have lower burglary rates than easily traveled street layouts. As for example, Five Oaks District in Ohio was restructured to create several small neighborhoods by converting many local streets to cul-de-sacs by means of barriers. Within a short time, traffic declined 67%. Traffic accidents fell 40%. Overall, crime decreased 26% and violent crime fell by half. Concluding my statement, I would ask the honorable members of the town planning board and other committee members, listening to this session, to place themselves in our shoes and think about safety of our neighborhood as a priority. Similar to what they have been advocating for their own neighborhoods like Whitmire Drive and Clifton Park Road. Public officials cannot have double standards to same problem when it comes to their neighborhood versus others. It is extremely disappointing and frustrating to hear a public official raising concern about potential traffic increases on this street and then rubber stamping the Windsor Drive extension a week later. With all due respect, Windsor Drive merits same concern about traffic as Clifton Park Street. This connection has no benefit, but will certainly jeopardize health and safety of our neighborhood environment. The term environment, as described by Institute for Transportation Engineers Journal, is a place where residents can live, work, and move about in freedom from hazards of motor traffic. This connection is threatening that very environment and we, the residents of Windsor Drive, are determined to maintain the safety, tranquility, and character of our neighborhood. We will keep fighting. We will keep fighting until we are being heard and have a resolution to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Niskuna.
Sure, go ahead.
Is your house on the same side as the sidewalk that runs along Windsor?
No, it's just the opposite.
Okay, so you're on the opposite side of the sidewalk that runs the entire length of Windsor?
But our kids frequently cross over the street onto that sidewalk. Most of the kids from this neighborhood cross over to that sidewalk. And one can imagine when the traffic increases that freedom would be restrained and it would be high risk for our kids to cross over, would be scared.
We have about 15 kids at Junction of Brittany and Windsor Drive.
Yeah, that's probably. Yeah, that's probably why I asked the question, because of that clarity. But, you know, they'd be crossing the street to get to the sidewalk.
Right.
Residents on the side that don't have the sidewalk might have that additional disadvantage. However, the whole neighborhood might have the advantage of having a sidewalk where most of the things you cited tonight on risk of traffic, and most Niskunat residents don't have that benefit.
We already have one, and we do use that.
Yep. Well, thanks for answering the question.
So, thank you guys and Art for organizing that portion of the meeting. I'm just going to recap, I mean, frustration with the comprehensive plan. There's some points kind of more against a traffic study. Potentially needs more points addressed, because there may be some data points that would affect that number of cars that are coming through in order to properly make that decision. You know, take another look at the home values, the things that were presented to us at the public hearing, and just dive into that a little bit more. As far as looking at connectivity, balance that with the residents' concerns. Take the residents' concerns very seriously. And then, Mrs. Gass's point, a safety concern, just, you know, applying everything that the town's doing equally across all streets and protecting the safety of our residents, which, speaking to the planning board and Town Board and as a planner, is always a number one priority for us. If, 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 I just wanted, so those are the, and we've definitely heard those, and I do think, even though that there's some communication going back and forth, and we don't always say it perfectly, I don't even always say it perfectly, that we are listening to all those things and do hear them. We have brought up traffic calming a couple of times. And I guess I'm interested, if we look at a road diet that would narrow, so typically when we're looking at planning, and I said this at the very beginning of the meeting, they have, if you're going to do that connectivity, and this is across the board with, when there's connectivity written in the codes, definitely you have to mitigate impacts the neighborhood, and you're trying to discourage that cut-through. So I guess I'm wondering if the planning board or people from Windsor, if there is a traffic calming measure that would make this okay? If, you know, if, if we put, I mean, anything from narrowing the corridor and putting a wall, or, I mean, I guess my question is, typically, if you do this, you would do it with traffic calming. And so the question is, is there something that we could look at, that we could work with you guys on? I guess, I just wonder, where is there a middle ground if we're trying, if you guys hear?
Kooli just gave you an example. He was the first resident kind of in this extension. And when he placed a, you know, children at play sign, and it got, you know, a car came through and it just crashed that sign. And you could get a sense of, that was a traffic calming measure, right? In a sense?
Yeah, I mean, you can, yeah. I mean, you can do some pretty serious things to a corridor for traffic calming, though.
I don't know how much those are adhered to, you know, when there's through traffic as we explain.
Laura, I would like to add a comment here. I have heard many times saying, "We don't want to isolate the neighbor." So we don't want to imprison Kelch Farm neighbors. And I think you can ask and take a survey. For all the folks living in any kind of neighborhood that are cul-de-sacs, their quality of life is, you know, pretty good. And I disagree with the thought that, you know, it's going to be isolated. It's going to be, they're going to feel imprisoned. None of us are feeling imprisoned. And you can take survey of all the people. Take a random survey, do a Google search, and nobody feels that way. So I don't think that is an accurate assessment. The other thing is, we're not going to compromise on, you know, having more full wards added or any other traffic harming measures. Look at what has happened. I think we need to learn some lessons from the county's project at Via Del Mar. And now town is going to be eventually investing another $10,000 to figure out how to calm the traffic there. So there's a common rule of thumb. What ain't broken, don't fix it. So now you're going to create a road connection and then going to offer us traffic harming measures. So, you know, what is the need for the road? If you're talking about the connectivity, you know, multi-use path is the best. You know, it can promote health. It can promote, you know, connection from neighbor to neighbor, talking. And, you know, it is from one end to another, to Blatnik Park, people can use it anytime. But if you're putting more traffic, you know, just imagine cars zipping through and, you know, how, how are you going to enjoy that bike ride? I just don't see that logic. And we're not going to compromise, compromise on any traffic harming measures. We don't want the road, and we just want to be very clear about that.
Okay, so, and I just want to put that point out there. I think we want to make sure that you guys feel heard and that we're appropriately capturing what you're speaking. But I think from the planning board's perspective, they also want you to hear them, right? And so that you can kind of understand where they're coming from when they look at these plans and when they're asking for these connections. It's not meant to be, it's not meant to be, you know, detrimental to a neighborhood. We're just trying to figure it out together. And I'm just wondering if you guys recognize that there is some value in that connectivity with neighborhoods, with the understanding that nobody wants a cut-through. If you're looking at good planning, a cut-through is never something that the planning board or planner or any person that's doing something for their town wants to see. The question is, is there a way to make it so that you can have those goals that Jengus and Chris talked about, where you have, where, you know, Ben, there is a benefit to the neighbors, but not a benefit to people who are coming from Rotterdam that can drive 100 miles down Windsor Drive? I think the question is, is there a way that you can configure this so that it is a good neighborhood connection that we could all get behind? Or is there not? So I guess that's one of the questions that we're looking at. I don't know if anybody from the planning board wants to jump in on that?
Well, we, I know the comment is, "No compromise." The way it was said. But we did get a lot of feedback from neighbors prior to this meeting asking for that calming to be considered for the existing traffic. You know, Art Pasquale mentioned a moment ago that he was the first resident. And it's wonderful, but that every phase of this development has increased traffic. And maybe at some point, it makes sense, to Laura's point, to put some sort of calming mechanism in place, you know, even without the next thing. As a planning board member, I am working at Kelch Farm as the next thing. It's an application that gets approved. So it's kind of a continuation of what Art was saying. However, are we doing as a town everything we should be doing to calm the existing traffic on that road?
Chris, your point is valid. This, this community has grown and in phases it has grown. But I think you are overlooking the fact that this time we are talking about through traffic. In the previous phases, there was no through traffic. We are even okay if this development is closed at River Road. There's no exit on the River Road. But I think you are disregarding the fact that this time it is through traffic, whereas the previous phases were just an extension. That's what I want.
Maybe Art can, maybe some of us have memories that go back that far. Good point that you're making, but my recollection was Minlo was adding through traffic by way of Fox Hollow. So before that road was constructed, Windsor didn't have that path. Now it does. Just like St. Anne, you know, it was road. I was not on the board back then. I do not know the answer to that.
So Chris, I just want to make it clear that Dimple, when she just now spoke painstakingly, she made a statement collectively of all Windsor Drive participants who are online today, and some did not. She spoke for all of us. And she has gone through step by step. So I'm, I'm a little bit puzzled that you are still exploring if there is, we can consider a traffic calming measure, because we have up to here. And we know how, where this is leading to. And I just want to also ask one thing before we conclude this, in terms of what are we going to take out of this one? For one thing, we have made it very evident that so far you have been proceeding on basis of an incomplete traffic report. 952 cars, you already are admitting are too many. They are far more than 940. That is our contention. So I would like to find out, will you be considering, I think Laura alluded to that, if I'm not mistaken, will you be considering for more comprehensive traffic report? That's one. Second thing is, will you be considering, because this is in contradiction to what was submitted to Complete Street Committee? The pricing of the house, it said that it will actually increase. Our, what we are finding, it will decrease significantly. Will you be, will you consider to estimate cost change of the housing here? Because this is in contradiction. So this is, these are the two important things that you would like to find out. And also that how come the Complete Street Committee made this assumption? Could you please provide feedback when, therefore example, saying the desirable for homeowners? Could you provide some evidence in terms of which homeowners have actually forwarded to a desirement? Because it completely collapses the basis for CSC approval. And I would like to make this into record. They would like to have this feedback from you. These are an action items for you, for, before your act or before your 8th June meeting. We have been listening for you for hours, muted. This is the only opportunity that you guys have provided, and we very much appreciate it. But we really would like to go back, thinking that, yes, we accomplished something. And this is not just a procedural step that you are doing, that you'll go ahead and report that you have listened to, they have, you have communicated to us, you have presented your case. You have reasoned in terms of why this connection is needed and discuss that. Done. Without any, taking, going out with any, we would like to get some sort of an assurance that we have made an impact through all these preparations that we've done over the last couple of months, for heaven's sake, that this will not just go down as a one more done deal, and you proceed for the next rubber stamp on 3rd of June. Laura, please give us some degree of hope, some degree of reassurance that you will dig into what we have brought up to your attention. Thank you very much.
If I may, Laura?
Yep, go ahead, Kevin, thank you.
Yeah, I just, thank you, everybody. You know, I've been taking notes and listening. And I want you to understand, it's not a waste of time. I mean, again, the original proposal, yes, we did send a developer back to look at the connection, because that's part of our planning principles. And what we needed to do, what the board felt we needed to do in order to get where we're at today. And we would do the same for any development if there was a concern about the traffic study, about interconnectivity, and we would take it through the process. And that's what we're doing here. You know, I'll speak for myself. I mean, I was surprised at the original traffic report, the 975 odd cars per day, and the 90% diversion rate. I was surprised about that. And, you know, I made comments regarding that. And I, I supported going back and looking at the numbers and having the engineer from the applicant to regenerate the numbers. It was a 50%, 40%, whatever. Just to see, you know, have some kind of a measure. If 90% isn't reality, how, you know, what is the impact on Windsor? I was, you know, again, I was surprised at the 90% of diversion. Now, that was supported by the town-designated engineer and by Capital District Transportation, CDTC. So, you know, and that's part of, again, part of the process of trying to learn and try to understand what's going on over there. Now, you know, there were some comments tonight about rubber stamp. Again, there's no rubber stamp. And we really, or, you know, I can speak for members of the board. You know, we're here to listen and try to understand what your concerns are. And I hear you, you know? I don't like the 975 car today. And if that's reality, and like the experts at Townes, that's reality, you know, either A, we don't do it, or B, we have to have some kind of traffic calming or somehow fix the problem. And if there isn't a way to do any of those, then, well, then, you know, you know, we got, we got to come through it. It's part of our decision process. You know, we're going to have to make a recommendation also to the Town Board on this average density development, which includes or doesn't include a connection. But it also has to address the emergency ingress and egress from the site into the site for any emergency. So again, a part of planning, we have to take all that into consideration. You know, it was mentioned also earlier about, you know, frustration. I think I can speak for the board, and they can, they can speak up anytime. I'm not frustrated at all at the neighbors. You know, this is part of the process, is something that we signed up for as doing as planning board members. This isn't the first time that we've had controversial projects in front of us. It happens, you know, pretty much quite a bit, especially when, you know, people's neighborhoods change as a result of an application made to the town. We don't, we don't go out looking for developers to develop the town. You know, they come to us because they have the right to come to us, and then we have to make a decision. And that's, and that's what we're doing here. We're going through the process. We'll have to send this up sooner or later to the Town Board, and it's getting pretty close for us to, to make a decision. We have a proposal on the table, yes, with our input and with the connection. That doesn't mean that's where we're going to vote. And that doesn't mean where it's going to go. We also have to think about, you know, we're going to send this up to the Town Board. We want, we want to send something up that, that makes sense to the Town Board also. And so it's the neighbor, the Town Board, which represents all you folks, you know, represents ourselves. We want to send something up that we can all be successful for. We don't want to cycle everybody and send something up that, that nobody wants. And we don't want to cycle the developer. That's not fair to the developer. We don't want to have increased costs for everybody. It just isn't fair. There's some comments just talking about the traffic evaluation, whether it was incomplete. Well, we could, we could send that back at an increased cost. And maybe the numbers come back, it's 1,200 cars per day or 1,000. If we're not happy with 975, I can't see spending the money to, you know, just tell us it's more than 975 that we may not be happy with. You know, there's seven of us on the board, and we have to make our decision where our mind is upon us. We also have to look at options. As the applicant stated earlier, if you take a look at the site plan that's currently in front of us, it shows a connection. If the connection isn't made, is the emergency to the cul-de-sac that's shown on the site plan, is that, is that the right thing to do? Or is there a different way to have that emergency access? Frankly, I'm concerned with having emergency access off of a River Road when the primary entrance to Kelch Farm Road is off a River Road. So to Laura's point, if there were some kind of, an event, which, you know, may not ever happen, of course, but, you know, the Windsor Drive connection allows for that. Or in the Windsor Drive, an emergency connection. There are other options out there where we could, I guess I'll say it because we've got to talk about it sooner or later, is that we could have the road built but put an emergency barricade up in place so that an emergency vehicle could knock down the barricade to access Kelch Farm Road versus the other potentially proposed access off a River Road. That's not shown, and that's something that we need to discuss as a planning board in order to send it up, to, you know, send it up to the Town Board. Or, or you do the connection, another option would be to do the connection and get some real data, get real traffic numbers and find out whether, what is reality? You know, like was stated earlier, probably by some of the scientists or engineers that are sitting in, hey, you know, you know, the data says 975, why wouldn't we believe that? Well, you know, I always like real numbers. Maybe we need to see what they are. It's just an option. I'm not saying I'm going to recommend that. Not saying it's the right thing to do. It's something that we need to discuss as a planning board. We need to discuss the contingency plans. If we don't have the connection, how we're going to make sure the emergency access and the safety of the new folks, the 24 units on Kelch Farms Road is also handled. That's something we do at every development. It's nothing different that we wouldn't do at any time. So, not frustrated with you all. Yep, go ahead.
Chairman Walsh, this is Jengus. So you, you mentioned something that I think it's probably worth exploring here a little bit.
Yeah, you're, Jengus, you're a little low on the volume.
Okay, can you guys hear me? I mean, nothing's changed in my end. Can everyone hear me?
We can now. You were low before, too.
Okay. You brought something up, Chairman Walsh. It, I think since everyone's here and we're in discussion mode, it might be worthwhile to discuss a little bit more. There are certain benefits to the town in terms of a sewer pipe, and hopefully Joel is still on. And water retention and the, 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 the conveyance of sewer waste on Kelch Farm currently, that will get improved with Joel's roadway plan. that will get improved with Joel's um roadway plan. So a potential option that you discussed, Chairman Walsh, and I could have Joel comment a little bit on, on what benefits there are to the town in general from actually what he's planning and doing in the site is that we could actually build Joel's plan as it stands to date. But actually not connect the road for pedestrian, for uh, for civilian traffic. Is that what you're getting at, at one of your comments, one of your options?
Joel.
Good to see.
Can I?
Are you asking me, Genghis, if that was one of my?
Yep.
Yeah, what, yeah, I mean, there was a couple of things I just threw out there. One was, you know, you, you, as it's shown, you build it as it's shown, only you have the barricade at the end of Windsor. So you can't, you'd only access from Windsor if there was an emergency to get to Kelts Farm Road. Versus the emergency access at the cul-de-sac, just a different option. The other option, again, just options, you know, where the discussion, right, is that you build the road and you get real data. And, um, and then if the data is reality and it, a thousand cars a day, nine seventy-five, twelve hundred, whatever it is, hey, you know, you, you close it down. Now, because obviously there's a couple of problems with doing that. One is that the people that buy their homes, uh, the, the road is open and all of a sudden the road closes and that might, you know, they may not be happy to twenty-four new um residents on the street. And I, and I just saw a comment pop up that once you build the road, you never close it. So there's, um, um, you know, so people having faith in us that, that can happen. And in the past, at the planning board, you know, we've been able to condition approvals. Uh, say for, for instance, uh, one possibility would be have a condition that says, hey, you, you build the road. Uh, one year after it's built, you collect the data and then based on certain criteria, it stays open or it closes, you know? So, you know, and it would be, it would be put into the resolution and be executed. Uh, so it would happen to happen. Uh, but again, those are just options. Um, you know, we're gonna need to discuss sooner or later because we, we're gonna have to make a recommendation. So uh, I have mentioned, I talked to Mr. Diopino, I've mentioned, uh, I've mentioned to Laura that there's other options and that's something that, you know, we, we're gonna have to address.
Uh, I have a comment to make. So Laura, you made a comment actually in a C A C meeting dated July tenth last year, twenty nineteen. So you commented that applicants in the past had tried to restructure the wetlands on the Kelts Farm, but found it to be prohibitively expensive. Okay? So, but now it seems very simple, you know, the builder is changing plan, you know, we have already seen three, four plans, so uh, it's straightforward, it seems very straightforward. He's accommodating, accommodating, you know, towns, counties request. So I am just concerned about it. If wetlands or the other, you know, things are, you know, properly, uh, because
Thank you.
Just behind the Kelts Farm.
Yeah, thank you. And, and if, and I think it was brought up at the beginning of this meeting is that the latest plan that the applicant has sent forth avoids the wetlands uh with the road laid out that the way it is. Uh, so it's minimizing the impact over there versus the original plan and versus the subsequent plans. Uh, so yes, there always is, there may be some uh impact, but it's been minimized with the latest plan.
Yeah, and I do follow up on that. Um, whoops, sorry. That is, that comment was directly from a different developer looking at developing that and setting that property aside because he felt that it was undevourable, which I think happened on a fair number of occasions. I don't know what the purchase price of that property was at the time though. So that it makes a difference on, you know, whether or not you can actually handle the cost of all the infrastructure and everything that's going on. The purchase price and the original purchase price of that property, I think, was like in a million. It was, it was up on sale for like a million dollars for quite a while. So I think the change in the price for purchasing that property changed a lot. Um, but and also it, it may just be, I think a lot of times things are obvious and maybe you don't even notice them, but because the stub was built and it directly the stub directly ends on wetlands. So I think a lot of times when people were looking at developing it, they were standing at the end of the stub and going, ugh, I mean, that's, that's, at one point, if you were to build that road directly, if you were to take that stub and bring it directly over to River Road, you need a bridge and, uh, practically, or a box culvert, and that's very expensive. Um, so when anybody was looking at connecting that stuff directly to River Road, I think it was very uneconomical. Um, the, the price of the property and then avoiding the wetlands were definitely factors that changed over time and that I think probably contributed to some of the changes that you're seeing um with the developer now.
Laura, I would like to make a comment now. Um, we moved here in twenty thirteen and I think I can speak for all the residents uh from that development. Uh, both with the traditional builders and uh the Hodoraski builders. We were told that it is gonna be forever wild and because of the wetlands there. So, um, that is disappointing. You know, whenever we do anything with any person, we give them a chance of informed decision making. We do not know about that. So if there's a road that's built, uh, built, people can decide uh based on the facts that they're seeing. And now, you know, ten years later, hello, we get a knock at the door and by the way, this road is gonna be extended. And, uh, you know, that's, that's pretty disappointing and I don't think that's being transparent. So, um, you know, I think that uh town or planning board is cherry picking whatever they think can be used to justify uh their concept of connectivity. And I think the best possible solution for everybody is the multi-use path and not the connection. And, um, I am hoping that, um, Chairman Walsh will give this opportunity to review the different plans that we can all come up with what would be acceptable um as, as neighbor to neighbor. Uh, we should all be involved in this process and, uh, we are ready to listen to you. And if there is a dialogue, there's always a way that we can compromise. But if there are people speaking on parallel directions, like, you know, we present, we feel that we don't think heard. Um, there is, there is never a dialogue or where there is a compromise that can be reached in the middle. So that's what we are hoping for. You heard us, uh, so we thank you for that. Uh, but we wanna move forward with, um, something that will be mutually agreeable, acceptable to all the neighbors. Uh, we don't wanna create problems. Then we need to invest more money to fix those problems. So, um, I think before you guys make any decision, keeping, uh, in mind with what we have all sincerely shared should be factored in. Home is once a lifetime dream for all of us. So I think if you take that into mind, what it means to all of us.
Another comment I was gonna make to guys for a second. Uh, Chairman Walsh, uh, appreciate your comment about uh connectivity and access to the new development, but, uh, one of the uh plans we saw at the last actual meeting, not the after-meeting plans, was to have two entrances to the new development and it appeared to have a nice little arch entrance exit both ways. So interesting how we're talking about connectivity, but at the same time, the new plan has the longest uh kind of cul-de-sac-y and to the entire development. And now we're worried about those people being trapped. And that's the new plan. I know County asked for less exits onto the River Road, probably because it's too fast moving. Um, perhaps one of those entrances could be an emergency entrance that the vehicles could mow down if they have to, to get to that cul-de-sac side and not having it exit through our neighborhood. Just thought.
Thanks, Dan.
Good.
I'm gonna say sorry.
So, so I just wanted to make a comment. This is Genghis again, and some folks have directed some questions directly at me. It, it, it's clear to me from what the neighbors have said that people had set expectations for you in the past about this being something that was unlikely to ever happen. I, I, you know, I say to myself when I think through that and I say to you too that we, we're dealing with the reality we have at hand right now. Right? I'm not sure what this cost is to Joel, what he's done to be able to then be able to make this something that's economically feasible for him. But this is a reality. So I, I, I do know that you had expected something different. And it weighs at my thinking relative to this. So I wanna go back to what Chairman Walsh said and what I delineated. I understand that what represents the neighbors is no connection, except for the bike path, period. Did I articulate that clearly? Okay.
Absolutely.
What represents the planning, what represents the planning boards?
Yes, you brought up wars.
Is, is connectivity, like we've talked about before. I explained what that meant for me, specifically for the Windsor neighborhood, specifically for the Kelts Farm neighborhood, if it were approved. And the general planning principles that go along with connectivity now and twenty years and fifty years from now. So I'm gonna draw more specific line based on the chairman's comments. There is the possibility of having Joel build the plan as is. And we close the connection to Windsor Drive. For as long, for as long as it takes until at some point in the future, fifty years from now, people look back and said, you boomers from twenty twenty, what the heck were you thinking when you didn't connect the road? Can, can I?
Why don't you, why don't you create a stub on their new development? And make sure they know that maybe one day it'll be developed into an extension. So we'll have a stub and they can have a stub too.
And Mr. Khan, I can assure you fifty years from now.
Scott, Scott, I can't table the development because we are legally bound to address it, since you asked that question.
And, uh, and Mr. Khan, I can assure you fifty years down the lane. Uh, the residents will praise you for that decision. The new generation will praise you for that decision because of whoa, carbon, who looks at carbon emission. Because of bike trail there.
Sir, sir.
Be assured of that fact. Nobody's gonna complain.
You, you, I could ask you to put some money on that if you like. Because you can't predict the future fifty, you nor I can predict the future fifty years down the lane. So let's, so let's
We have, we have put the money on it.
Guys.
They already have put fifty hundred and fifty thousand dollars on it.
There is an option on the table. Therefore, the economics associated with building the plan as is, is in place. Right? And there is no additional traffic on Windsor Drive.
Could you repeat yourself?
So, um, I know that we've heard a lot and we're throwing out some new ideas that not everyone on the planning board has discussed, but um, what we have done in the past at some point, in some points, and we're looking at now if we agree as a planning board and not everybody's weighed in, that even if this traffic study is showing nine hundred and thirty-two cars and it's not complete, so it could be even higher than that. If we're already saying that's too many cars and we're not willing to make that connection right now. Um, but what makes the most sense from emergency access standpoint and maybe from a future standpoint, is to build the connection with a barrier that can only be opened, you know, for emergencies. And, um, or, uh, you think someone just typed, you could put two stubs that were close to each other or something like that. Um, those are possibilities that not the entire planning board has really discussed yet, but, um, it's, uh, it's something that could be considered from some of the comments that we've heard tonight. It's a possibility. Um, I think that you should still consider, and we talked about this, potentially traffic coming on Windsor Drive anyway, but, um, I mean, that's just something that the planning board and Kevin and Genghis um, are looking at. It was something that we have done in the past.
Yeah, and look, Laura, the main reason I brought, hang on, let me just say one, the main reason I brought it up now, and again, you know, it was something that we had discussed, Kevin brought it up. I just delineated it and zoomed in on it. Is because it would, in fairness to the planning board, we have not discussed it yet. And every planning board m- member makes an independent decision. And I know that we're not gonna have the opportunities again to have this kind of dialogue in the timeframe that we're on. And I just wanted to at least, you know, shine a light on the comment that the chairman had made as to what the potential options are. This never was an either or scenario. There are other options that can be considered. And to Laura's point, this is an option that we have some familiarity with.
So if I may, um, I'd like to first say thank you. It's not easy sitting in your chair. So I wanna acknowledge that. Appreciate you taking your time this evening to spend, you know, three plus hours and, um, maybe be put on the defensive a little bit. It's not an easy spot to be. And thank you. You know, your time is valuable. Our time is valuable and, and we really do appreciate that. And we appreciate that it sounds like you're hearing us. Um, and hopefully you can hear the fear and the risk that everybody in this neighborhood feels is associated with this cut through. Um, and that's what we're trying to convey. So, you know, we're not trying to be contentious. We're just trying to be heard. And so thank you for all of your comments, especially for those of you on the planning board that have made comments this evening. We really appreciate that. We were looking for some feedback back. So I know I can speak for everybody when I say thank you to that. Um, and I can also appreciate that none of these additional alternatives have been discussed and so you may throw them out the window or you may not. Um, but in terms of a crash gate, what are the, is there any data about a crash gate being put up and then being taken down later on to then form a cut through or connection? Or what is the precedence regarding something of that nature?
Sure. So I can speak to that a little bit. Um, it's not everyone's favorite topic. But I mean, the planning board did have a split vote on Lori Drive and actually voted for the connection to be temporary. It still exists today. Um, so we do, how that, how that works is I think partly it would be, in this instance, you could set up the way that if the gate was ever to be removed, it would have to be a town board action and everybody would, you know, have the ability to comment. Um, but I think from a planning standpoint, if we feel that the cut through is too large, it definitely would make the most sense as an emergency access. There's no question about that. Um, and then not having a crystal ball. I think we as planners would be frustrated with ourselves if we didn't leave the possibility for it. But I mean, leaving it grass, making it a barrier, there's all kinds of options, um, that can be explored, you know, and this is a planning board, if the planning board feels like it's too much traffic.
Yeah, I think the Lori Drive piece was, I think, what, nine or ten years ago now too.
Yeah, it's been a while, but there wasn't since actually in Jobe this up where a connection wasn't made and then the both neighborhoods asked for it to be made. And, and, and I, I don't know how many years afterward that, that happened. Um, and so then the town board did make that connection, but I think without the desire, without the people saying, we really want that connection politically, they're not going to make that connection. Um, it's, so there, there are examples when you can drive around town and take a look at them and there's various ways that you can look at that um, option. And I think, you know, I, I'd sort of look for direction here from the planning board, uh, if we wanna, if we want to look in some of those options or not.
Um, I'll speak to that. I mean, I won't speak for everybody again. It's, uh, you'll have the same vote. But I think we, yes, based on, you know, what we've been hearing, not just tonight, uh, we have to evaluate all options. Again, we want, um, be successful uh for ourselves, for the developers, for the people on Windsor, for the town board. We wanna be able to send something up that everybody can get behind here. So we need to, you know, take a look at, uh, uh, there may be others out there that I haven't thought of or, um, uh, you know, we have the plan as it is. Uh, okay, if the connection isn't made, where's our emergency uh access? Is that the cul-de-sac? Is it at Windsor? Is it, it opened right away? Does it get opened, opened in the future? Does it not get opened until someday, you know, neighbors request it and it's a town board action? So we just need to summarize that somehow. And I, I know that we, um, you know, it may be a surprise to some people talking about this tonight because we, we haven't had a meeting except for the last meeting that we had, you know, a public meeting. So, um, you know, we'll have to get some feedback from, um, all the other members of the planning board on, on what they think of, of the other options. And if we had to pick one, but what would it be? And, uh, um, I mean, that, that's just pretty, pretty much it. If there's, if there's another option out there that I haven't thought of or that, uh, um, you know, we haven't, we've kind of been kicking around a little bit there, please, you know, let us know, especially from the, uh, the residents on Windsor. We'd love to hear something if we're missing something there. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to know, to get a little more history on the, the Lori Drive action. Um, it was before my time. I don't know how that came about. I think there were different decision-making points attached to that. So maybe there's, at some point, we can just get a summary as to why the board behaved the way it did on Lori Drive. Would be helpful. Would be helpful for me.
I actually think there was litigation involved.
Yeah, I don't recall litigation. Um, but I, I, you know, but it was very similar to, to this situation and, um, and there was, uh, you know, it was just like, as Laura said, it was a split vote and, um, um, you know, it was a, yeah, I mean, it's a tough, was a tough one and.
Look, we're, we're having an open conversation. I'll, so Michael, to answer your question, and again, I'm only gonna speak to myself on the Lori Drive, um, on the, on the Lori Drive, uh, cut through or connector. And I'm just gonna say this carefully and I just want hopefully everyone to hear just the words that I'm saying. Do not judge anything else beyond just the words that I'm saying. Specific to the Lori Drive neighborhood, as far as I saw it, the Lori Drive neighborhood folks in that cul-de-sac had zero expectation because there was no stub road and it was a complete cul-de-sac. And there was nothing that actually showed them visibly that any connection was ever gonna be there, that a cut through would actually go there. So Scott, you're saying, as we did know, Scott, it's not exactly the same. The Windsor residents do see a stub road at the end of the drive. And was smart enough even to ask questions and get people to, to actually get them to buy houses, right? So the point I'm making is, I'm answering a question about Lori Drive. I was one of the people that voted for the temporary barrier to be put up because the neighborhood had made it clear that they had zero expectation that there was ever going to be a connection. Michael, does that answer your question, at least from someone who voted for that temporary barrier?
It, it does, and I'd like to actually even here get more color and details from Laura and Lenny, but thank you very much for the, uh, explanation.
So Scott. So, I'm, I'm, I know a lot of you have meetings. Oh, thank you. Um, I, I think that it's, you know, it's frustrating when we're trying to speak very carefully so that you guys can understand where we're coming from. And then, you know, it feels condescending to you or it feels like we're not listening. We're just drawing a distinction between Lori and Windsor where there was not a stub for drive and where there is one. And we do hear and we do understand that, um, you know, developers represented to a large portion of people on that road that it couldn't be developed. I was told by a developer that it couldn't be developed, um, that there has been a lot of information out there that it would be very unlikely to develop. We do recognize that. There's no question. Um, Genghis is just drawing a distinction between a paved stub and not a paved stub. And it's not meant to be condescending. Um, so, well, I, I think it's, you know, a little quarter would be okay. And I'm just saying this, um, because, uh, you know, our country is very divided and, um, social media is very dividing. And it's very difficult to do these meetings virtually. And I appreciate that you guys are all here doing this with us. It's so hard. And you can, it's very difficult. We're not standing, you know, next to each other. We're not looking at each other's eyes. We're speaking one at a time and everybody's watching that one person. And it's hard to unite that way and find consensus, but given that we all understand the situation as a little different than we normally used to, if we can give us each other a little quarter, and if we don't always say everything right, still give each other.
Folks, I, um, I, I apologize for being condescending and also for sounding condescending. I am known to do that, so at times I am condescending, so I apologize for that.
That's not acceptable. As a planning board.
You don't, you, you don't have to accept my apology, but I'm making it anyway.
Yeah. No, no, the fact of the matter, you have to be careful because you see, after your planning board meetings, we have discussed what is going on, who are these people who are, what is the qualifications, what is the hiring process? You let us in a, uh, un- under impression that you absolutely, uh, tone deaf and not listening to us. And you just now saying that, yes, sometimes you express yourself like that. It has an impact on us. And actually it has impact on how you proceed. So I'm really happy that we are having this conversation. And there seemed to be a slight glimmer of hope, which was diminishing for us. I tell you, we, many people are giving up that you guys are already decided, even though no matter what you say, there is not done, there is none. More and more stamp coming, another one will come on third of June and please do the due diligence as Rajiv has systematically described and we will send you the slides before you collect additional stamps, because you are collecting stamps based on wrong basis and we will dispute that. Just please keep in mind and how you, we'll be listening in future. Please be careful. I appreciate that.
So thank you for those comments and, um, thank you for your understanding and building consensus and finding a way to work together. We're all, we're all, we're all different language.
Uh, I just want to make a comment. So I listened to all the video recordings, I mean, of the meetings, C A C, C S C, E D H P E C that happened last couple of months. Then Town Planning Board, of course, you know, Tony very nicely mentioned. Um, you know, I hear, you know, sometimes words or sentences that are spoken, they are very disrespectful to, I mean, for the Windsor Drive residents, you know. I cannot, I have listed all the comments. I don't want to read them here now, but like, you know, I mean, committee members are jokingly like making comments, you know, when being a Windsor Drive resident, I'm sitting and listening. You just don't like it, you know, you feel offended. And I can read like one of them is more traffic is good, that will slow you down, you know? And based on these comments, these decisions are made, then oh, town makes sure, you know, and I cannot like recreate those, you know, the converse conversation environment. Like town makes, makes sure stops are paved so that people know there is potential for connection. And then like making fun, like as if we didn't know that Windsor Drive residents just didn't think of that. Okay? So that is another one then, in another committee, I think in C A C S C Conservation Advisory Council, uh, Committee, you know, they were talking about, you know, telling positive things to our, I mean, committee member, oh, you did due diligence before buying your house because, because she just commented, oh, I didn't buy house there because, because of the traffic, I saw the yellow line. And so I didn't show somebody, so you did your due diligence at this, we people, we didn't do it, you know? I can go on, you know, and of course, did the residents read comprehensive plan before purchasing their house? And then, you know, once somebody said, oh, it's logical, traffic study will just, uh, uh, show it, you know? Uh, it's logical, will come out from the traffic study, you know, a traffic study didn't, does, you know, doesn't show it. So I just, like, this, this is a general comment, you know? I know, uh, you know, committee members are just talking, but when it's, you know, I mean, there is the video link and residents can listen to it. You know, I think these comments are not respectful. That's all. No, at least I didn't feel good. My neighbors, you know, many of them had actually, it just didn't make a, you know, positive, you know, or, you know, uh, feeling, you know, expression here. Thank you.
Um, yeah, I definitely agree that. And I think that there are definitely towns that we can do better. And to bring that to our attention, we will continually strive to do better. It's, we don't always, we see a lot and it's good to know sometimes when maybe we've been not careful enough or kind enough, um, and respectful enough. So I, I appreciate that feedback. I will try to be better and I will try to guide all of our committees to be better about that. And I apologize for things that weren't appropriate.
Um, could I add something, Laura?
Sure.
Sure. So I've been a resident of, uh, Windsor Drive since nineteen ninety-five, almost as long as art. Um, I've watched each phase come through and I even objected to some of the bike path that was built. And a couple of things, just to clarify, uh, somebody made the comment about the builders deciding. The builders don't decide. The town has decided this before even the first road was built. I was told in nineteen ninety-eight that this was decided before. So this has been on the map as a line since nineteen ninety-three. No builder has had any say in it. Um, I objected to the bike path in nineteen ninety-eight because I thought that it was showing that the street was going to be unsafe. And that's the sole reason that it was put there. And over the last twenty years, as they go to this last extension, I think that's turned out to be true. That the street is inherently unsafe. There's other roads that are classified the same that have been built recently that no bike path, no walkway is there. In fact, this is the only place in Niskuna outside of Old Niskuna that has such a thing. Um, when we first objected, we were left with the two yellow lines put on the road, which made it look like River Road. And over the years, I, we, I asked nineteen ninety-nine to have some measures put as each branch opened and nothing was done. Um, stop signs weren't put, speed humps weren't put. Um, when I walked this, the next few develop, new connections put, came through, I noticed that there were two three-way stop signs on Fox Hollow. There's three, three-way stop signs on Roseville Boulevard to control traffic. Um, so it's a, perhaps we've been singled out not to have anything done. Um, the second point I wanted to make is I live at the corner where Saint Anne's comes in. And as soon as Saint Anne's opened, every car from Fox Salt, from Rosendale took that cut through. They didn't go through Angelina Drive, Antonia Drive onto Ben Antwerp. They took Saint Anne's to Windsor Drive. The traffic immensely increased. There were cars backed up on Saint Anne's from one intersection to the other. I bring that point up because I don't think a traffic study will give you an accurate assessment. As soon as you open Windsor Drive to River Road, you will get the same thing. You will get every car going through there. Every GPS will direct you through there. So I think you're gonna get over a thousand plus cars going through. The other thing that has concerns me that, you know, we call this urban collector street, whatever name you give it, the town's things that they have done have made it look more like an arterial. So the W O lines, which many residents don't remember, were only taken off with the last Windsor Drive was repaved recently. Otherwise they were there. Now we have the speed sign on there. The only place, other place I see a speed limit sign like that is on River, uh, Rosendale Road as it goes to Lion's Park. I understand that you want to see the speed and look at it, but what it shows and what everything has shown is that, that despite whatever semantics you use, it's going to be a minor arterial. That's what you've, between the double little yellow lines that were put, the sign that was put, the lack in the past of them making any measures, put any safety measures, um, sort of stop signs, speed bumps, anything has never happened. And the fact that this is the only street that has the walkway with this advantage is it also shows to prove that the seat is inherently going to be unsafe.
David?
And you want it to go through, it's to go through. And I think that when I look at Mr. Basilian's plans, the first plan he had that he was put, 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 put forward to the town had no connectivity. It had a U-shaped road, very similar to Parkville Place. And I don't think that they have any problem with connectivity there. So I think a similar thing that he put up initially would have no problem with connectivity. Um, the other thing is emergency vehicles. So I've been here twenty-five years. There's never been an ambulance, very few ambulances come down here, or a fire truck, or any other emergency vehicle. We've lost power many times. It happens further up on Van Antwerp and other places where the lines are above ground. So I, I know you can't say nothing will ever happen. I realize that for sure. But I think that statistically, if you look at the twenty-five years we've been living here, that hasn't been an issue. And for ambulances and to go, actually, the, the entrance to, I believe, the ER at Ellis Hospital is on Rosa Road. So the quicker road for them actually is to go down, uh, Providence or Rosa Road to get to the ER and not go down Knott Street and around. So I think there's plenty of pathways for people, things to get through. I think historically, the way this street has been treated over the past twenty-five years is not as a residential street. It's been treated and it's been built to look like a minor arterial. And everything that everyone has done has gone on to show that. And this last extension puts the icing on it.
Hey, David?
And i- if, if, if I'm wrong, why not go with Mr. Basilian's original plan with a U shape with no entrance to Windsor Road and just a walkway?
Can, can I take the floor real quick?
Sure.
So David, I want to first thank you tremendously in that you have a historical testament that I have, don't have the benefit of living through. And, um, I'm not, and, and it's hard to articulate all the thoughts that go through all of our heads accurately and using the proper English that doesn't offend, right? And there's always that potential and that's what we're all thankful for, each of us trying to do tonight. And it's an every week battle for us. And after three hours, we do get a little loopy sometimes and we just, you know, like, you know, maybe we'll say something we shouldn't even be saying out loud. But I'll say this, your testament is what I'm challenged most by. You made some comments that the road has been made to look like a collector or that it hasn't been calmed or, or mechanisms haven't been added. I honestly interpret the, the copy as a plan, the evolving plan of this area of Niskuna as this road wasn't made to look like anything but what it has become. You know, it's got a sidewalk because it was meant to be more of a collector. It is extra wide because it always expected to have a little bit more traffic. The law, the yards are deeper because they knew that there's going to be more, more calming by having more distance. So it's evolving to what you've given us a great historical reference to. And it's realizing what that is. The Parkville example you gave, which is a great one, because it's where my mind went, which is a road, it's further, I think, east Down River Road. It's just a U, U-shaped, uh, road like what Joel originally proposed. It didn't have a stub hub, a stub road right behind it. There was no planned destination with that development. It was just a thought of some land that was just kind of a long river road. This is very, this is a much grander plan and we rolled out the evolution better than anyone else has done. So I, I'm not saying I'm for this as it's, as an application. I'm just saying you articulated the road's signatures. You know, those metrics that make up a connector, the things that Mark spoke of earlier, the characteristics, it's not just traffic. It's how was the road built for its anticipated traffic? That's what defines a collector in part. So you just did a really good job summarizing that.
Uh, Chris, uh, Chris, I would, I would, uh, again, uh, adding, adding to your points here, uh, Parkville Palace Place and then Seneca Road, Down River Road, they are cul-de-sacs, right? Uh, I'm, I'm wondering what is so special about Kelts Farm that you need to have a direct connection and what's not so special about these two cul-de-sacs which are just down River Road? And, uh, yeah, it's, it's, we were all curious, why is this so spatial and those two communities are not spatial that you have to have a cut through? Uh?
So, so, so guys, I think, I think Chris answered it, right? And, and this is what I, as a planning board member, and I'm gonna speak for Chris because he just articulated it too, right? This is what we're wrestling with here the most, is because actually there is a plan to connect Windsor to River Road. And all I can do as a planning board, hearing what you've got to say, is to ensure that the one piece of data that shows us that causes at least a thousand more cars to actually use that is that to make sure that that doesn't affect your life as that plan gets executed.
I think what we're also saying, Mr. Khan, is that through the course of time and Mr. Lefan, things do change. And so what might have made sense at one point may or may not make sense today. And the risks associated with this cut through are pretty severe for many residents, enough so where, you know, as Mr. Lefan pointed out, many of us are taking a lot of time on a Monday evening to try to share with you our concerns. And so, yes, but I don't disagree that the original thought process was what it was. I think we would all agree that nobody on. I think we would all agree that nobody on this call feels that that makes sense today. And that the risks associated with it and the detriment to the residents of this neighborhood is so great. And exactly what are the benefits? Um, what are the benefits to those risks and how severe those risks are, whether it is the value of property, noise pollution, decreasing local appeal in neighborhood? What benefits are we getting that far outweighs this laundry list of things that would be very detrimental to the residents of this neighborhood?
The, the correct, by the way, if my story, the, the crash gate on Lori Drive was enacted in twenty-eleven, just FYI.
Thank you.
I, 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 I wanted to add-
Do we have, yeah, do, if you have Art online? Or we need to, to kind of do, make some concluding remarks, please. Art, are you there?
I-
I, I, I just have something really quick. I, I think that I live right in front of the, the speed sign right here uh, on Windsor Drive that was just placed out here about a month ago. I, I can tell you, it's almost comical seeing people speed up to see how fast they go on Windsor Drive. Um, you know, I, I think really, you know, uh, Mr. Khan um, and, and the chairman to say that nine hundred and fifty cars is a lot of cars. And I, I appreciate you being transparent. Um, and I, I guess the question I have for the rest of the board too is, is nine fifty a lot of cars to everybody? You know, and, you know, perception is reality. And not everyone thinks maybe nine hundred and fifty cars is a lot of cars. You know, and I think that two gentlemen on the committee said that nine fifty is a lot. Maybe with more data, it could be eleven hundred, twelve hundred, thirteen hundred, a thousand. But, you know, it, maybe it's not relative to all seven board members. I guess what number is a lot of cars to everybody? You know, and I can tell you, and I, I think, uh, in March, you know, when we talk about the per capita per hour backing up, going through a, a path onto Windsor Drive, um, watching out for pedestrians alone is unsafe. And then now we have additional thousand cars plus, we'll call it, that will be speeding down a road that we can say had a lot, maybe different purposes over the last twenty-five years, but has become a gully on speed. And people gun it from Fox Hollow all the way to the Van Antwerp, but I can tell you that um, I hope that everyone thinks a thousand cars for all seven board members is a lot of cars. And that the data points may give us even more cars than that. Um, and if we're really going back to that, that seems like the, the linchpin that everybody's kind of going off. That's one data point that everyone kind of says, hey, this makes sense. This is a lot of cars. Regardless of whatever happened over the last twenty-five years, that, let's go back to that. Is a thousand cars too much for this neighborhood? Yes or no? And if it is so, what's the answer to that? And, and try to simplify it. What's, what, well, how do we make this happen for the residents of Windsor, for this new developer? And that you guys have a lot of projects, I imagine, that you're working on and that you can move on. Boy, I, I, I'd like to hear also is that, you know, two board members said nine hundred and fifty cars is a lot of cars. Does everyone agree to that? Is that too much for a neighborhood? That I feel like was never built for that many cars of five thousand cars or more a day that on, you know, I have a child that goes to Rosendale, but I go to work in Niskuna on Balltown Road for a furniture company that if I'm going this way towards a high school, it's backed up well past Menlo. So I, I, I just wanted to see the perspective of everybody. Does everyone agree that's, that's a lot of cars for this?
Hard for this.
Hey, John, th- this is Chris. I don't know if you're still there. I think you, I think you dropped off. Um.
You can still speak.
It's, I, I, what's up?
Yeah, we're losing a lot of, um, but so maybe we could, we could just touch base quickly on some future points, wrap anything up. And then if, you know, you guys, um, oh, you're back. Um, we do have, I'm just putting this up. So our next planning board meeting is next Monday. So we have um, more opportunities to look into stuff and get back to you guys as well.
Hey Laura, this is Mike's period tenet. So John Maynard uh, asked a question of the board members. I'm a member of the board. And I think nine hundred and fifty cars is um, tremendous car volume. It's a lot of cars. Objectively, it's a lot of cars. So I just want you asked for that question. I wanted to answer it. Thank you.
And I can chime in through. I, I also can say objectively, I, I, I share the opinion of many of the other board members that it's a lot of cars. Um, one question that we have to ask and one question that is asked in the traffic study is what is the capacity of the roadway and can it handle that, that level of traffic? Um, I will refer you to that traffic study because it does clearly address that concern. It's a concern that our, the board has been very transparent about um, from the start. Um, but it, it's uh, it's nevertheless, it is, it is addressed in the traffic study. And um, another question that, that John raised, right? I don't want to overlook is um, it, it just deals with the, the stub road and the overall design of the road and the width of the right of way and the fact that this, this road has a tremendous volume in its current um, current state. So um, these are all issues that we have to manage around and uh, I, I don't want you to think that um, you know, we, we're losing sight of that, that that point is, is lost on any of us. Um, you know, the, the, the fact that Windsor Drive is on the doorstep of the town center, the, the high school, town hall, Knott Street, it just by nature of proximity to these major commercial nodes, it is just by definition a, a thoroughfare. And uh, we, we, we have to consider that when we consider its value, relative value in, in providing connectivity to the residential areas around it. And we also have to consider that um, there's, there's a lot of existing traffic. So uh, those, those points aren't lost on me.
Uh, Patrick, I would like to respond to that. Um, how much of traffic is too much traffic if you do the studies? Six hundred cars, more than six hundred cars a day is considered to be impacting the quality of life. And coming to another question, uh, capacity, yes. Um, you know, it has been shown that it still has the capacity, but we are factoring in nine fifty cars a day, nine fifty cars a day or zero point eight miles. That is a number of cars, regardless of what the capacity is considered to be the case. So that is a whole lot of cars over zero point eight miles. Um, so that's the point I wanted to make. Six hundred cars a day is considered to be, you know, something that people can live with and tolerate. Beyond that, it's considered to be impacting the quality of life.
We believe- like not-
Uh, uh, I just want to make it clear that we are getting mixed up with, you know, nine hundred cars, nine fifty cars. We are talking about additional cars.
Additional nine hundred.
This is not the number of cars that's going through Windsor. There are a lot more cars going through Windsor Drive today. We are adding on top of that nine hundred and fifty cars or thousand cars. And if we have a comprehensive tra- traffic study, we are going to add probably another fifteen hundred. I don't know what that number is. Want to, or do?
So I'm being sensitive to people's time and I really appreciate everything that everybody's been saying. I, I'm listening to Planning Board and I've, I've heard, I've seen four or five of them um, say that they at least want to look options, at other options based on the fact that it is a large amount of traffic. Um, so I guess my question is, my recommendation would be if you guys are, are okay with this direction is to reach out to the developer. I don't know if he's still on the line or not, but I can reach out to him tomorrow and just ask if he can come up with something, uh, um, a connection that won't be open and see what that would look like and bring that to the June eighth meeting. Um, if the planning board would like to take a look at that.
So, sorry Laura, can you-
Laura, Laura, this is Jengus. I'd like to see that action, please.
Someone speaking? I, I, I'm glad to give my opinion.
Did you guys, this is Jengus, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Jengus.
And I was just telling Laura that I'd like to see that action, please. Built but closed.
I'd like to see that as well, Laura.
Yes, given some of the his- history and other areas, I think I would like to see it as well.
I, I think Diplo has a, has a comment, but I would like, it's Chris. I would, I would like to also request that act to be made. To clarify, I'm envisioning a dead end sign at the end of Bri- Briarwood, Briar Way, whatever road that is. But the road's built with some sort of barrier. Is that kind of what you're envisioning, Laura?
Um, yeah, let me reach out to Joel and see what some of his options are. Uh, what, what are usable and doable? And then we could bring a couple of things back to June eighth. Um, and just take a look at. What, what I mean-
Laura, this is Joel. Can you hear me, Laura?
Joel, hello.
Yeah, I've been here the whole time.
Okay, great. Do you mind coming up, can I touch base with you tomorrow and come up with some options?
Yeah, I just want to clarify a few things. I've been wa- watching the comments roll by, okay? And uh, number one is that, you know, I've been a resident and developer in Niskuna for twenty-eight years. This is my seventh subdivision. So I've heard this all before, okay? And I remember Windsor, complete Windsor as wood and tons of wetland, okay? So I remember Windsor, when there was no Windsor, right? So I'm probably the longest resident here, all right? Now, in terms of, I'm a responsible developer. You know, I could just come in and not go with a special use, all right? Not have to worry about the planning board, excuse me, the town board special use. And I own this land. I could put in twenty-four R-one houses, okay? I'm not putting in twenty-four R-one houses, I'm putting in an average density development because I'm sensitive to the neighbors, all right? I'm giving a huge green space buffer, a multi-use path. And somebody, I don't know who it was, that there's no benefit to that sewer, well, um, yeah, I can drop it off and these dropped off, okay? But if we took the four hundred thousand dollars that I'm spending to put that sewer in and divvied it up amongst the town, we'd probably get a fifteen percent tax increase for every person here, okay? So don't say it's a small item. It benefits everybody. The waste, the septic waste coming down Windsor from every person on this call is going to go through a brand-new sewer line that I'm putting in at my cost, right? And that benefits everybody, all right? I'm putting in a bike path. I'm giving the green space. If this were the plan, I could extend the backyard of every one of those houses and it would be an R-one development, okay? But then no one gets the green space. And all the people on Brittany and the first people on, say, uh, Windsor don't have that buffers up. I'm gonna leave all those streets up. Leave flowers up as much flowers as we can get, all right? So I'm responsible, all right? You know, during the peak hours as a developer, I don't want to see nine hundred and fifty cars through my stuff either. No one has sat here or, and came up with a constructive idea. I tried to say, we had the same problem in Oakmont. We had the same problem on, say, Niskuna Drive, okay? And what did they do on Niskuna Drive? They put up local traffic only during the AM and PM high-traffic times, okay? And you sit a cop there and if you catch somebody that's not in the neighborhood, then you give a ticket, all right? So there is some benefit to connectivity, you know? But, you know, I don't want to see nine hundred and fifty cars through there. So people just have to be more um, objective and, and come up with, with ideas, okay? And if we put the crash barrier in, I can put the crash barrier anywhere. I mean, you know, I could put the crash barrier right at the, all right? I mean, the county made me put in one road cut and somebody mute and I-
Joel, we lost you completely.
Hello, can we wrap this up?
Yeah. So, um, if Joel comes back on, I'll speak with him tomorrow. Um, I really appreciate everybody coming out. I wrote down a lot of things. Um, we do have uh, things to follow up on with the traffic study and I will try and reach out and keep everyone informed. Um, and come, and we will, I think, I'll reach out to Joel and see if we can come up with some other plans for June eighth just to be respectful to the things that we heard tonight and try and find consensus. Um, Kevin, do you want to add anything?
Uh, no, just that uh, um, again, we have to look at all options. There's, it's not a done deal. I keep hearing that. That, that does kind of bother me. People think, think there's, it's not rubber stamped. That's why we're here. That's why we're all investing the time, all the planning board members and the residents. Because we want to hear everybody has a say and, and take it to heart. It's important. It's important to us that we get this right also. Um, and uh, so uh, again, Laura, we'll reach out to Joel. Joel, uh, heard everything we had to say tonight, which is great. I'm glad he listened, sat in on the meeting. Uh, and then we'll be on the agenda for the next meeting, which is, what is it? It's next week, next Monday, right?
Next Monday, yeah, and-
We, we gotta keep moving. We, we owe this to not only uh, the residents to keep it moving and come to the decision, but also to the developer. Um, we, we just, we gotta, we gotta do diligence and get this done, do it right, of course. Um, so we'll take a look at all the different options. Uh, and again, it'll be a vote. Every, everybody on the planning board, you know, has one vote and uh, we'll see where it leads us, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, and any, if anybody has any other questions, they're certainly welcome to email me. I can share them with the planning board and get back to you. And I appreciate everybody's time tonight. Feel free to reach out if you have anything else. Um, Kevin, I think this is going to open to adjourn.
Yes, I'm gonna ask for a motion.
Thank you for listening. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah, thank you.
You're counting on me.
Um, we have a motion from a planning board member to adjourn.
Come on.
Uh, move. That was, I believe, Mr. Austin.
Can I second it, Ms. Blajon Jengus?
And seconded by uh, uh, Mr. Khan. Uh, all those in favor, we can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Which is a good move, so. And hearing none opposed will adjourn the meeting. And again, thank you very much, everybody. And we'll, uh, I'm sure we'll be talking uh, Monday night again. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate hearing from everyone.